Oh, yes, yes. Okay, we're gonna start the Town of Sanderville Select Board meeting Wednesday, the 8th, 2024. We are going to say the Pledge of Allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item two is open session. We are going to try to keep this to two minutes per person. Is anyone interested in speaking? Yes?
I have a question. Last week, Wednesday night meeting, Mike had mentioned getting a hold of an attorney to speak to the issue that we've been dealing with. And I neglected, I forgot, didn't even think of it, but I thought, I'd like to know the name of that attorney. Was it the town's attorney or somebody else?
It is the town's attorney. Her name is Kristen Collins.
Yep, I looked her up today. She's a real estate attorney. She's a municipal attorney. I looked her up.
That's correct. That's correct. She is a municipal attorney, and that's what we need for municipal law and for the municipality. So that's the attorney that we're using.
All right. Okay, but I asked if she was a real estate, an expert in real estate, and I was told yes last week, and she's not real estate. She's a municipal.
He stated she was an expert.
Right.
And we have had other opinions from outside people who have said she is top-notch in real estate.
Well, just to follow up, I would expect that there would be a letter coming from her with her opinion and the reasoning behind her opinion. And I would like to have that. We've requested any information dealing with that plan, Tom and I have.
Right. Well, we have not yet requested a letter, as far as I know. And in light of, I mean, we have a meeting maybe tomorrow to speak with her, but I'm considering putting that on hold right now because of our budget issues. And that's one of the things that we're gonna have to, we're gonna be working hard on tonight is our budget cuts from our town meetings. So I think our meetings with the attorney are gonna be paired way back to what we're, what's hot on the front burners.
So essentially, you are handing this land over to this guy then? Because he's dated that property.
That's your opinion.
Stayed last week, then you're not gonna do anything else. You can just stay it now, you're not gonna do anything. He has that lit, that is dated, and it's got a lock on it chain.
I don't, right now, I mean, and we can discuss it, but I, we, I don't think that it would be wise for the town to spend money on that in light of the fact that we have to cut how much money out of our budget? Seventy thousand dollars?
Fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and eight dollars.
Right. So it will have to go on hold for right now. Anyone else?
So you may do something in the future. You just wanna get through the budget and that type of stuff first, and then put it in order of priority.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we will perhaps revisit it, but right now, no. Yes, Tom?
In light of the fact that the town isn't willing to spend more money talking to a lawyer about this issue, it was indicated that the Select Board was advised not to pursue the matter of access to that land. Can we get more information as to why that advisement went to the town, written or otherwise? What's the rationale behind not advising the town to pursue the matter?
I think because it's extremely costly.
Okay, you think.
Right. And it was a verbal, it was a conversation that the chairman, Mike Wark, had with the attorney a while back. And these issues are typically extremely costly and...
Can we get an estimate or some just not committed? Just an idea, you know, the idea of cutting off that land and using that money to help fight this issue is still a potential. So it would be interesting or useful, I would expect, to know what the potential cost of gaining access. See, it's a very dangerous precedent on the part of the town to just give over to the current landowner, the gentleman that owns the road, to block access. There's a couple of issues happening. That's such a dangerous precedent in town. There's many examples where that could be done. And when people start to hear that, it's gonna be chaotic, number one. Number two, you know, I wanna clarify and make it public that the, in the emergency meeting, it was stated that, that it was, and I spoke to Dale about this, and I spoke to Jeff about this, and I just wanna put it on public record that it was, that there was an agreement that the landowner had with Wilson Newt. I wanna make it clear, there is no agreement. The only thing that exists with Wilson is a letter from the landowner's attorney dictating to Wilson how often he can access his land and who can access his land. And in fact, the landowner has said nobody else but Wilson. That is not an agreement. Wilson doesn't agree with it. So I just wanna make sure that people don't go under the impression that there's, oh, everything's okay with Wilson. Wilson Newt, and I'm saying this personally, he's very stressed over this matter. He's an 83-year-old exemplary citizen that has owned that land and has access. There's been a recent rumor that the landowner came to him and said, hey, I heard you run it up the road, pulling someone out. Wilson has not pulled anybody out of that road. So there's just some bad vibes going on here. And I really think, and I'm disappointed, that the town isn't at least interested in pursuing even non-costly alternatives to working this out. To protect a landlord, I mean, for half an 83-year-old resident, again, being restricted from his land, that landowner has stripped his land, his right to do, to build a runway right up to Wilson's line, and consequently, the wind has blown over multiple trees into his field, and Wilson has to go in there and clean that up before he does any work. The gate was locked. We were told that the gate was gonna be unlocked. We were told, can you do...
Just the last week that it would not be unlocked.
It is locked. It is there and locked, and Wilson does not have the access. So I wanna make it clear, there is no agreement.
I thought you said there was an agreement, that he had it.
I never said there was.
Oh, okay.
That was guarded by Neil Gray, that rumor.
What's that now?
And I have that letter right here, which the town, I gave to, this is the letter. It stays in there exactly. Nobody else is allowed it, and he's allowed to go into his hay and it's part of his income stream. But it's also until this guy Kenny says not anymore. So there is no agreement. Never has been an agreement. He was told this in a letter.
And as far as Dennis Campbell, does, we don't know whether he's got an agreement or not.
He has a letter. Obviously, he had no right to ask for that. Oh, I had a right to ask, but he doesn't have to hand it over. So I don't know what that says. I have no idea. Wilson does not have a key to the smoke pad lock. We don't know if he gets hay and equipment in there.
Mr. Kenny was actually here last fall and said, he's the one that actually told us in a meeting and is on a recording that he has an agreement with the landowners in there.
Well, but he can say what he wants. This is great here.
Again, you're talking for somebody else. We spoke to the owner. That's what he's told us.
I'll have Wilson here at the next meeting. Wilson can tell you.
I understand, but the other thing we need to remember is that Wilson, that is a, that's a citizen, that's a, between two citizens, that's not the town.
No, we understand that, but it's all part of the equation though.
The town should be, my opinion, my personal opinion, is the town should be more open to pursuing non-costly ways to work this out in support of an exemplary citizen. Eighty-year-old man that's being abused, in my viewpoint on this, and being intimidated by someone that has, is an attorney, has access to attorney, and obviously has the resources to just sit back, make a statement, and chuckle, and wait for the response, and knowing that people, that's abuse. And that's, that's something the town ought to at least do whatever they can to recognize this and to support him, and look for ways that that can be worked out with the landowner. Related to that, and I know I'm probably exceeding my time, is that I spoke to Dale and Jeff about this, that it was stated that they should follow up with Dennis because he has an interesting perspective on this, Dennis Campbell. I urge, in addition to that, you should speak to Wilson Newt, you should speak to others that have good information and a good history of the use of that land, the access to that land, and the realities. It would be very restrictive. In fact, it would be very biased to just talk to the person that's speaking up in favor of this landowner restricting the land, you know? And I get that. If anybody had the choice of not having traffic by their house or having it, they would choose not having it.
Right.
But that's pretty, that's pretty...
That's a pretty stupid point. I live on Route 23, and I'd love to sell the traffic.
Yes, so...
Just on the point that you made as far as the town pursuing something on behalf of one citizen, I mean, I am empathetic as far as his, you know, what's going on with him. And, but I think, and I think pursuing non-costly, whatever we can do as far as the land that the town owns, I think is more of what we would be pursuing, honestly.
Yeah, we understand that point, but the town, with the town protecting that 285 acres down there, and protecting the town's interest, by doing that, that's gonna facilitate Wilson Newt doing his thing. And again, that field down there, he does, that's part of his income stream, his return.
And so... The other thing that concerns me is the town has said they've not received the letter from the landowner's attorney, and there's no documents on that that have been presented. We've asked for all information related to that. That's, I think it excusable in the town to have the landowner's verbal words to say agreement that you can access it to log it. That can change at any time. Verbal means nothing. It needs to be in writing and agreed upon, I would think, by the Select Board, and input from the town on that as well, to just say, oh, I'm satisfied, and that's what I've heard. Maybe I'm interpreting it wrong, but that's what I've heard from the past chair of this Select Board, that, you know, we're okay with that. We're okay with just saying that we're allowed to go in and log that land.
Yeah.
That's not...
Yeah, I would, I would say something in writing is, would be imperative. A verbal agreement is, as you said.
And the so-called agreement that doesn't exist with Wilson also very clearly states that that can change at any time. So it's tenuous at best. And so I just wanna make sure that people understand that there's no agreement, and Wilson's told me that personally, and I'm just stating it to you. We can talk to Wilson directly as well. I'm sure he'll reiterate that.
Do you know if forestry has a key to that lock?
Who?
Forestry? Do you know if forestry's got a key to that lock?
I have no idea.
I looked in the town report, and I couldn't see, I told you yesterday that that's what I was told, but I couldn't see that there actually is a forestry committee. But I believe on the website it says that, so I don't know what's going on with that.
I can find one, yeah.
Toby, Toby, you're the chair of the forestry committee, is that correct?
No, I'm not the chair.
You're not?
In fact, I have asked the Select Board for the last four or five years that you really should have initiated this at the beginning of every year, but...
Initiated what?
The action of that committee for that year, because we are a standing committee with, I think, fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars. And we have been inactive as a committee because of that, and also there's not any reason to do a harvest rate yet, but, yeah, we could be, we could be going in there. And, but he said this close to 300 acres, and we have in the past managed it. It's, it has a management plan, which is quite well-written.
Where, where would I find that plan? We tried to find it the other day.
It should be in, in the old office.
In the old office? Any idea what it would be under?
I have no idea.
We see, we see a good part of it, but I don't know where they store it.
We put a lot of work into it. We did more than just a total inventory of what is in there. We also did an inventory of the wildlife that's there and the birds, and we've had University of Maine come up and do a lot of studies. I'm not sure if there's a barrel pool in there. I know there is one on Bean Hill.
Right, because that's kind of what I remember.
That was a complete comprehensive forestry plan.
Yeah.
Complete comprehensive on soils, like he said, wildlife, the whole, the whole mindset. It wasn't just a tree growth plan.
Go ahead, go ahead.
To me, it's important for the town to know that that is a growing asset. You have between the two, close to 500 acres, and if you figure a half a cord per acre, and this is a managed property now, and we did a lot of planting, so let's figure a half cord per acre, not up on pricing right now, but it's probably going to be stumpage at around $20 a cord. That's per year. So that's around five or six thousand dollars.
So just getting, as far as your committee, I'm extremely interested in getting that up and, and appointed or whatever we need to do as far as that would be...
Right, the last, the last I remember, Toby, when we talked about it, you said where there wasn't anything ready to cut, it was inactive, and that was how we were gonna leave it until you felt that you needed to get going again or something. As far as me, whenever you guys need to do something, you just gotta tell us. It's not us controlling, you know, being that committee.
I haven't been on that committee. My wife was on that committee class, and we didn't think it was right to have both of us on it. John was on it.
John.
Cindy was a secretary.
Yep.
Rick Kellerman was on it.
Okay.
And myself, and Paul, Bill Rowe, that Bill Rowe is on it.
This would be a natural group to...
Exactly what I'm thinking. That's exactly...
...activate this access for the public.
Right, because if you did have someone who would be interested in informing the board as far as that land, the last time you accessed it, and, and perhaps we could have a conversation, not perhaps, we should have a conversation with the landowner who is obstructing our access.
We used to send the forestry train every year, Toby.
Yep, we had, we had a forester who...
Is it entry road?
No.
Oh, it can't be.
You guys, you guys remember graveling in the road to get into it?
The last time they, the last time they had them, they had to have, have to land and end the road to get in and out of there.
I think the jogger didn't put in...
So anytime, anytime the town does, does anything to that road, it's, the maintenance is open back up on it.
When, when Herb McDonald sold it, they did some basic work on that road to provide the gentleman that owns Dexter Lumber, that owns it now. Beyond that, they did some improvements to help access over some swampy areas on that road. And Wilson, over the years, has improved that road to support his access to his field for environmental purposes, so.
His town, town's land came from a government buy, buy...
We're, we understand, we, we know that.
Right, but they also have...
It's public, it's public land, belongs to the people of the United States, not just the people of Sandville, but the people of the United States.
They did the United States...
The United States can't keep people out.
Yeah, we have the...
Yeah, they did it out, but it says just as soon as, just as soon as the Sandville wanted it, goes, goes back to people in the United States.
Right, right, that's correct.
Town thought they could sell it more time.
No, no.
Couldn't.
Debbie, I'm sorry, I just wanna call on Debbie. Go ahead.
I think that, you know, Wilson, he does get a lot of his money from hay and stuff like that, but I believe that he also leases at some time for hunting. So that's also additional income to him that he wouldn't be able to get. I think we have to be careful saying that we're not gonna spend money for just one citizen. It's for all the citizens in the Town of Sandville, not just one, not just Wilson. We're all here and wanna have access to that land. If it was possible to, to cut that property and, and manage it properly, and the Bean Hill, I would like to know that that money that came from that foresting of the land be put back into this committee to figure out the access and go towards lawyer fees. It needs to go back to that piece of land to find out what we're doing and not just go in the general fund.
Dale, do you have any input with regard to that?
No, I mean, I'm not saying I agree or disagree, Debbie. The way, the way town works, period, any and all funds goes to the general fund.
Well, I just hope that it goes from there.
And then, from there, right. What would have to happen is, is whatever that dollar value is, we add that on the warrant next year, that, that X amount of money, Select Board recommends that that gets put into reserve, that reserve account, or if it needs to be actually spent on attorney fees for a project. But that's kind of the circle, you know, how it has to work.
Well, not if it gives us access.
Well, yeah, I know, but you should have the access anyway.
Sure.
Unfortunately, yeah.
You'd be off your own land.
Toby, go.
Sounds to me like, like the situation has changed over the last five or six years. I understand Pump Creek no longer is, is owner of the land, it's been off of us. So it's either a discontinued road, or an abandoned road, or a county road, and there's a lot of gray area. And it's not just Sandville that has been dealing with this gray area, it's many towns. We think regardless, if we're gonna do anything, it should be in the budget that we have, we increase the budget, you know, for legal fees to look into that.
That's part of what Tom and I are trying to do, Ashley, we're going in tomorrow, they found the books that we need to look up, find out how, there's like six roads I need to look up, and to see how those are handed, all different years, and we're going to see what Ashley happened. Maybe nothing happened, maybe they never did discontinue, we don't know that. It was just suggested to from these documents, and that's what we're trying to find out, exactly what happened.
That's an important piece, discontinued or abandoned.
Oh, I know.
Same here.
Well, just because it was doesn't mean it was legal right at the time that they did. If it was public land, then they didn't have any right to discontinue or to close it off, period.
Well, and when we, when we got it from the federal government after, what we think, well, I know for a fact, it was in '55 when we got it, the town got that land, and it started proposing to discontinue, started in 1937 right through to '44.
But there's no town records that we view.
Yeah.
And Jeff has been supporting us to research.
Federal government owned it before that. Was it legal to discontinue it on them? They did, so there's another whole question. So, and it always has had access, and most of the time when things go to the Supreme Court, it's like, it has a lot to do with the history and how the use, and the use of that land by the public. And the public always had the right to go down in there and hunt it, hunt for mushrooms, pick raspberries, whatever they wanted to do. You can't post that land and keep people off of it.
Well, town can. Years ago, there was a fire down there.
There have been fires.
There's several bombs in there.
As of right now, too, if something happens down there, fire department has no access.
With the forest fire down there, we're gonna lose all our...
I have, I have no key to it. I can't get in.
Does the town have a key to it?
I can, I can get in there, but he doesn't like it.
You guys been in there and seen it?
I know, I've never been in there. I would like to go in and see it.
I used to go on that property.
On my, on road, ready to get into my land.
I remember that.
When I was there.
I remember that. That's why I'm saying, that's...
And we turned the gate into a pretzel, and then we, the town okayed it. We did it as a donation to the town, and they okayed it except our donation.
I remember that, and that Mike...
Any legal repercussions for it?
Mike Wark has referenced exactly your situation every single time we've discussed this, exact issue. So it's, I, it's a worthy cause. I mean, the land is, I, you know, I, I value that, and I'm really happy that, that we have now the group that is responsible for the conservation of it and the management of it. And if, if you can gather the troops and also, you know, get a chairman and everything, then we'll, we'll start a conversation with the landowner. Mr. Kenny, start there, because you have been managing it, you've been in, year in, year out, and you need to continue to manage it. So, yes?
I'm just curious, was there any proposal before you regarding that land from the landowner?
Proposals, yes.
There's been a rumor going around that you were about to sign.
No, he, when he first, actually, I did all the research, at least three or four years ago, and I have all of that, I don't have it right at my, but anyway, when he first started developing or buying the land, he asked if he could buy that land. And, and we looked into it and realized the government, you know, the US government gave it to us, and that in fact, we could never sell it. And if we did wanna sell it, we have to give it back to the US government. So, and so we said no, and that was the end of it. We have, we, the only thing that was brought up was we thought that Mr. Kenny was going to give us an agreement, which we don't have in hand, as of, right.
We need a legal reason.
Correct, correct.
And to find out, well, we actually need to somewhat agree with all of other landowners to that road for upkeep and improvements.
Right, because you go up and then you take a right, correct? And then it, then you're with Dennis Campbell, you're, you're sharing the, at that point where I'm not sure who's on the...
You're going, you got a right.
Yeah.
Kenny and Campbell own the land at the point we...
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Yeah.
I just wanna say that in one of the last selectman meetings, I think Dale was talking about, and correct me if I'm wrong, talking with Dennis Campbell, and he's got so much history and all this stuff, his family didn't own that land, his wife's family.
Yes, I know that.
So he doesn't have this long generational, you know, I, I personally have four or five generations here in Sandville, so does Bruce. Bruce's father actually owned a lot.
He owned one of the lots that, because there's a government, quote, government land, and behind that, there's another 128 acres that was taken for taxes that Lance Burgess was instrumental in doing. Well, my father actually owned that at one point in time. My father used to own about 700 acres down there, so I've got history in it, going right back to when I was a kid.
So I really don't wanna go by what Dennis Campbell has to say. I wanna make sure that anything that we do use and that comes in front of any of us has been something that has been recorded through the courts and that type of thing, because what he's saying is just basically hearsay.
Well, it's helpful to have a historian, and as far as saying, you know, 1937, okay, now we know, we can go look, go look up, you know, we know where we can start looking. So historical knowledge has value, I think. Again, I agree with you.
Yeah, I just don't want it to become bad.
Right.
No, that's, that's not even, that's not what I meant either, Deb. It's more, it's great that everybody sits here and we all talk, but nobody's writing it down. And that's why, to get his perspective, get that written down, then you do have timestamps, and it comes back, and it's easier for him to document or look for that documentation.
To get the facts.
Correct. Because a lot of times what ends up, or what we've dealt with in the past, is you don't, you can't always find that documentation. So you do end up going to not one person, but multiple people that are around, encompass that thing, and take everybody's, okay, I think it was this, I think it was that, and try to piece it all back together.
And I think Wilson may be a good person to sit down and talk to as well.
He has much more knowledge.
He's owned that land for sixty-plus years, Wilson. I would say then he must be talked to, if he's gonna talk to anybody that's affected by this.
I agree.
But this is the first year the gate's been locked, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, right, this is the first year that the gate, that was just put up.
And we got a nice mailbox in the cemetery.
Yeah.
Oh.
On our side.
Yeah.
A mailbox for the cemetery?
He had an old cemetery. He doesn't own seven.
Well, I think he feels like he owns everything.
Does the town or the hillside?
Yes, of course.
Yep.
Yes.
You should remove it. You should remove it.
Let me scroll back on this side.
Yeah.
I think if you can find that comprehensive forestry plan, there's a lot of history, and you have turning points, you have the survey, distances and angles.
Well, it'll say comprehensive forestry plan on the manual.
Jesus, it should, I mean, it's, it's in a three ring notebook that's.
I want to see if I find it, we'll see if we find it.
I have not ever, I've never seen the one in the town office. My wife and I have collected a lot and have somewhat our own.
If I find it, can I get ahold of you somehow, or take your number down, show you the number, and we'll give you a call?
Yeah, I'll go through it.
I'd appreciate that.
Who did the last, Sam Brown?
I was gonna say, would anybody else have a copy of it?
Sam Brown did the last one, right?
Well, he, he was our forester, but the.
Who owned the comprehensive plan?
I think it was Mike Whalen, you remember him?
Yeah, Mike brought it for us.
Mike did a lot of work on it, and the state forestry department did a lot of work on it.
Gordon, Gordon Moore?
Gordon Moore, and, yeah.
Does it take formal action to resurrect this forestry committee? And ask them to, to take this on as a topic of research and discussion?
I mean, only that we would reappoint them, or, you know, they could gather, and, and tell us who's who, and, and then we would reappoint them and get them up and running, and I, I think we should do that as soon as possible.
We used to have, at the beginning of all town meetings, we used to have a sign in chief.
Budget committee from all top.
Yeah, and then right afterwards, there was a time when the chairperson was sworn in, it was a standing committee, and I believe they, the bylaws of the select board has to sign in like.
We're doing that tonight, with, with other things.
Like the chairman of the, your planning.
Yes, yes.
Committee and things like this.
No, that typically that happens right after the annual meeting, so I just, I, I don't know why your committee fell off the radar.
Bill was our last, Bill was our last president.
Bill, oh, Bill was a while ago.
So that's a while ago.
It was a spell.
Yeah, yeah.
So if. The wood been drawing enough.
The Bean Hill Mark is another special lot to me, it's, you did a lot of work up there. That one, you don't need a key to. Not yet, anyway.
Give it time.
You got a government ground on that, and planted all those other trees up in there.
That's right, thank you. It was, it was the canopy tree, it was a canopy, my wife got a. Got a, I think it was something like.
Project Canopy.
Project Canopy, and that's where the money came from to do the, to the forestry plan.
No, we put some maples all, all on the Abbey Flower lot up there, where he had that one.
That's what happens when committees don't act, you forget.
We did, we did transplant those.
Did you?
Yes, do you remember that, Dale? We transplanted those trees? You don't remember that?
No, they.
I remember we were supposed to.
No, what?
It's still up there.
They are? I remember, anyway. No, I know, but I remember, and I know, remember.
It was hard going about, think anybody up here?
No, but I, I thought maybe it was you, Toby, that you were saying that you were putting the shovels down so it would create its own ball.
I brute pruned all the way around, but there was so much back and forth with Abbey Flower, I said, well, geez, maybe. You know, maybe the town will eventually have that open space, which was my dream from the beginning.
Okay.
I'd just like to say, in just a few minutes of people talking and listening, and looking back, look how much you learned, in just a few minutes of just people calmly talking, found out so much, you get people who want to volunteer to do stuff, I think it's a great thing.
I was gonna say something very similar, thank you, but thank you, Joey, this is the most constructive conversation we've had yet, so I appreciate your leadership allowing this.
Thank you, Joey. Well, I am extremely interested in that piece of land, I, I'm very concerned about our budget. So that's where, and, you know, and again, I'm just one person on this board.
You did so much on them lots with very little budget at all.
Well, no, but I'm talking about attorney fees.
You said Gabriel, he doesn't have too much stock.
May I take a year to, to get, to get the townspeople to go along with increasing the budget expressly for.
Right.
Specific duty to take care of it.
Yes.
He's a, he's an attorney, from what I understand, in Florida.
Yes.
Correct.
He can't practice in Maine.
Unless he passes a bar up here.
He'll pass a bar, or he can do that.
Right, exactly.
He's higher than the lawyer pays. He's alive, somebody's doing harm, but he can't, though.
Yeah. He does, he does have an attorney in, in Bangor, Paul. He does have an attorney in Bangor. I don't know who that is.
I do, I've spoken personally with him, and it was a good meeting, but obviously I didn't get anywhere with him. I asked him, I would insist that we do get the letter that he sent to the town, and of course, he wouldn't. He timidly, he just.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we don't have a letter, we do not have a letter.
I'm gonna make sure that, that Jeff has a copy of Wilson's notes, that you like, like I said, this quote agreement is, and I'm gonna read it again, he can revoke, he will revoke it whenever he feels like it.
I think I got that letter.
Yeah, I'll get you a copy of it tomorrow.
So I'm thinking that, I think it's important that the town does have formal communication.
Absolutely, I agree with you 100%. I, I absolutely, 100%. That's the only, yeah. I agree.
I think I like what the town manager just said, that because we're calm in thinking to get a law accomplished, and I think for the next year or two, we should continue that, and not upset this gentleman that has put the gate up and locked, he may very well do in his legal right. But if we go out right and approach indecently, that we do have acreage back there, we would like to harvest it. There's, it's in the memorandum of the forestry plan that we have an understanding that it is open for hunting and for.
Oh, interesting.
To walk around. I'm not sure about snow travelers or four wheelers. Because we planted so many exotic trees up in those places, but, yeah, we, we had it. That's our memorandum of understanding is to keep it open so that it has public use.
Just for the record, I had, I was witness to a conversation between Wilson and the landowner, and he stated he has no interest in meeting. Wilson asked if we could meet with him and meet some of my friends, and he said, I have no interest. If they want access, they can buy my land, it's his position.
Oh, that's a shame, that's, that's.
Easily enough done, as far as, my suggestion, and what I was advised, it's about a long time ago, because I spoke with attorney about that, and I've got another one that I have named, who is an expert, a true expert in this field, and then, and we talked about it in the domain, just take the road back, be done with it. And that does not mean that we have to, to then maintain this beautiful road in there. We don't have to do anything to maintain it.
Just take back the public access.
That's right.
Yeah, exactly.
And obviously, it's gonna cost something, but it's not gonna be terribly expensive as compared to the amount of wood that could be cut off that, just selectively cutting. That would more than pay for that and then have money left over. So I think that's the only viable option, all this discussion and all that, and just, and apparently, from what I was advised, he cannot fight the town taking that, because it's for public purposes, public use, and he can't fight the taking, what he can fight, and I've done calculations, it's gonna be between, depending on how wide the road is, between two and four acres of land. And if you're gonna reimburse him.
Pay fair amount to Dale.
Yeah, right, exactly, and I know what, I know what paid for the land, and how many per acre. And so that eminent domain is a viable option, and that just solves all problems, and is, is permanent fix.
I also have the original letter from him, that what he was offering the town for that land acreage wise. Because there's boggy areas, so he, and I don't have those numbers committed to my head, and I, but anyway, it's on my computer, but I have that letter, so I know what he valued our land at, so.
He's not the first guy that wanted to buy it.
Is that right? I don't, I don't know that historically.
Right, that's why we, we put up, remember Toby, we, they doubted the select board was gonna sell it, because it was a group that wanted to buy it, and we went, we went around and got a petition signed, and we hired a lawyer who worked pro bono, we didn't judge the forestry committee anything. And he said, well, you know, the town manager should write a letter to Susan Collins's office, and they explained how that, how that deed worked, and it, and it would literally take an act of Congress to change that.
Right, right.
Within that act, there was a grant from multiple states, so it's not gonna happen.
No, we cannot sell it.
We don't want it to be back to United States.
Exactly, we, we, we know that we cannot.
Then they realized all that, but we still had a petition, all kinds of signatures on it, that people did know, they wanted to keep that land, they did not want to sell it, it went through town meeting, we voted on it, even though we knew that we could, because it was already on the warrant, had to be voted on, and it was unanimous, the people wanted to keep it.
Okay.
I had a question for Toby.
Why, we didn't want to keep something that could have that.
The, that land was gifted to us by USDA, is that what I understood?
Department of.
Department. And Wilson's land is also probably registered with USDA, like my farm is. Is there any place to explore help with them for this issue?
I'm not sure.
Like with, like with my farmland, if I, they send me a newsletter each year, and these things, these topics are discussed in it, and access is one of those things that's always discussed.
They won't, they won't give you money, you can't be part of farm programs for entry or agriculture if you can't have access. If there's no access, there isn't a clear deed to it.
That's why I'm asking this question. The question, the question is if, if, if Wilson is indeed registered with USDA on his farm, like mine is, is there help available to get him access or to get access to the land that they gifted us?
Very well might be, it's a good place to look into.
Well, that's what Jeff did already, the USDA said that it's for harvesting, and it's not for everybody's access.
Did you just talk to somebody in Dover, or did you talk to somebody?
All the guy I called was a forester, he's, he's got the letter to, and the way he perceives it, or receives it, perception, reception, that is always difference between the two. He, he received it as it's for public use. In other words, you could enter the land, cut the wood, use it for something in town, that's how he interpreted it.
Forest is a lot more than trees.
Yeah. Everybody interprets stuff different, but what's, what's the actual?
Yes.
I think that's, this last, last week, I mentioned Tom knows Susan Collins' husband, who's also her chief of staff. And he's contacted him, he wants to do a follow up, but part of what they keep asking is about these discontinued roads. And that's what we're trying to, before he makes more contact, we gotta get that piece of, and that's the last piece of the puzzle that we need for this research, and because he wants to follow up, but.
Jeff, that's a good question.
Exactly, that's who wants to couple that with.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, as far as figuring out what the status of that road is, that is.
And we're gonna stop that tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
They, he looks up for us, and it's gonna get slogged, but we're gonna do it, yeah.
Good.
Does anybody know Neil Hammett, that used to work at Hades?
I do.
I think he retired, but he used to be, like, when we worked in real estate, he was the bee guru, he could find like anything, so I didn't know if he may be a source if we get stuck on something.
I think he's retired, but.
That's who I had on the agenda.
Yeah, he's just, he can find anything.
Yeah, what's the name of this road?
Oh, that's a good question, what is the name of the road?
Not Hill Road, stop, right, you go in the corner, he goes all the way inside.
He's saying go grand.
But even where it turns off, after going takes a right.
Yeah, that was once called County Road, yeah, it's called County Road, and then you go down there, and it takes a left. That's where the town land is, that was called Reardon Road. But, yeah, but it's off, and back in the day.
You're going right in through the cemetery.
Yeah.
And that's what road's up.
Exact, that's, well, in the current day is, so, in the current day is. Which they have on the tax.
Right, but I think.
But you don't go right through. That was called the County, back in the day.
So you could look up, like, you could go look up at the registry.
No, I've done all that.
You've done all that?
Yeah, yeah, and the last piece of the puzzle is, now that I know all the roads, the last pieces, I find out if in fact they were discontinuing, and if so, was any, you know, provisos on that, or, or whatever, that's what we need to find out. Because that's what everybody keeps asking us.
So the road was laid up from the covered bridge, then the avenue, straight shot right down through there. Now, I was calling it, down by the, down by Grandchild, McNoton Hill Road, there are registered streets. I saw Sangerville Grandchild.
You speak all, King Hill Road, and all kinds of different.
The avenue with Silver's Mill Road today, the avenue with the County Road. It's Union Street.
So.
Same one, same road, straight down through there.
Wow. So I think if, if your group will, if the forestry committee will regroup and, and, and will get everybody reappointed, I think is a very important step, so that you can start working toward having a conversation, or, you know, I, from what Tom said, the landowner isn't interested in having a conversation, but I think with a committee that is the forestry management group for that, for that land, Sangerville's Forestry Management Committee, if, if he's not willing to have a conversation with you, then we will, you know, we, we'll see what our budget is.
Well, I would just have the committee can meet, they can meet with us, pass along information, or pass it through the town manager, the town manager can work with them.
Okay.
Instead of having multiple people from committees try to get a hold of us.
Right, okay.
Have it all funnel through the town manager.
Okay.
Another issue, but with a small town like Sangerville, is there a conflict of interest with a man and a wife sitting on a committee? Or working within a committee? He said Cindy, Cindy, I feel like they shouldn't be on the same committee.
I think.
I think that was us, just, just you guys.
I mean, a committee is really, it's an advisory role.
That's all it is, you guys have all the power, all we do is make advice to you, you don't spend any money, everything goes through you.
Exactly, exactly. That's exactly right, so there is no conflict as far as, no.
She was a great chef.
I think we bore ourselves out of our.
All right, let's move on, is there anyone else here for any other reason? If not, we can continue on. So item, thank you very, very much.
John, you're in the front.
Thank you.
So item three, we're gonna sign the minutes of the board meeting, May 2nd, 2024.
That deed is actually wrong.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve those minutes. You said, Dale.
Yeah, I said.
Jody, Dale. Okay, the review of the, item four. Okay. Item four, review of the treasure warrants, A, payroll, no payroll.
We did not, I did not do payroll because of the budget cuts. In part of the general government that included Sam's and my increases in pay out of the rate. So I wanted to come here first and get the board's statement in the ledger, before I did payroll.
Okay, all right. That's how real it is, I know.
Yeah, we're gonna be short, there's no question, so, we gotta figure out what we're not, what we are and aren't gonna be able to do here pretty quick.
Right, and that's why, you know, getting back to the, you know, even these conversations, just to inform ourselves as far as anything. We need to just rein in a debt.
We're still digging.
Okay, so B. So B, um, so no payroll, um, B accounts payable number 29. Go ahead.
Would you like this?
Okay, um, we've had first and second and I'll blow all vote. No, three. In agreement. Okay, item six, old business, A town meeting. Are we just at this point?
I think we would just, where do we stay with the budget?
Okay.
Just kind of discuss what to place in town meeting, where do we go from there?
Okay.
Type.
Okay.
Discussion.
Do we wanna blow through the rest of this?
Sure, and then we can back.
And then go back because we're gonna be there a while.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
And then that way I mean.
Okay. We'll we'll pass over item six. We'll return to that. Item seven, new business, A competitive bidding discussion.
This is a a policy on competitive bidding. Um, it sets the maximum $10,000 before you go up to bid. With the cost of everything today, you get a cover, so go on the road, you go put cement cover, you're gonna be over $10,000. I'd like to see that maybe up to around 15 and that would cover most anything we're gonna run into, you know, like Scott Reynolds the other day. When you guys had the flood back in the beginning of the year, ran up over 15,000 just like that. You can't wait to have your roads fixed and stuff and yeah, it is a provision here. You could just go and do it. I think 15 would be more of a reasonable number.
So bring it up to today's.
Right.
Prices and what what it costs to go out the door. So, um. Dale, did you, have you, I have not read this policy.
I really thought we changed both, but.
So.
But I looked online. This is it right here. This is the only, this is the only copy that's online, but I really thought we worked on this a few years ago.
Well, I thought.
I thought we cleaned it up and I thought the 10 went to 15 because of the way everything cost and I also thought we cleaned up some other language in it.
So do we wanna table this and all all, um, because I've not read this and. And. On a night that we don't have as many things going on, um, we could work on it?
Well, how about, I mean, what about?
Do you wanna work on it?
Number one, it's just a policy.
Okay, yep.
It's our, it's our rules.
Yep. And we can vote and we can vote again.
We can change this every meeting from now until forever.
Yep.
Your biggest concern right now is that $10,000 number. You want that to go to 15?
Yep.
That, so I mean, we can do that.
Okay, why don't we do that?
That's an easy one. We can make that change tonight. That gives him what he needs to do and then we can work on this separately, come back next time and.
Clean it up, right.
Get everybody's opinions of what we think or whatever.
And it's not, no, they won't spend 15 more. I just think it gives a little bit of logic in there.
Right.
Right.
And if Michelle, you'll just keep it sort of on our agenda.
Yep, yep.
So that, you know, and we'll revisit it. Um, so I'll make a motion that, um, we're going to increase. The dollar amount to from 10,000 to 15,000 for, um, our policy on competitive bidding. So up to $15,000. It's not necessary to get a competitive bid, long and short of it. Okay, all in favor? Three are in favor.
Do you want me to email you this after I change the price so you can work on it for the next meeting?
I mean, I have mine. You you, we all have copies, so you do you want an email?
You have it in a in a word document?
I do.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay, cause then we can.
Then we can clean it up as we're, if we're doing.
Okay.
The only thing Jeff, just not the past history, we've done this many different ways. Number one, we call this competitive bidding. There's nothing as far as state statute that says the town has to, it's not like a federal bid. You don't have, at the town level, you don't have to come up with this engineer document, I guess I wanna say, like a lot of people in the past have always thought we have to do. It can be legitimately, he calls the contractor on the phone, hey, this is what we're gonna do. What's your price? It can be a verbal quote, doesn't have to be a written quote. Um, usually for a bigger job, we do get into that kind of thing. And then in the past, a couple of things, and we've stumbled on this amongst ourselves. There's different ways to look at it because some towns go by state rate as far as that's the maximum we're gonna wanna be allowable to pay. We tried that for a little while and one thing that we kinda noticed was. The state rate's not, just because you're gonna pay at that state rate, I might be able to pay somebody more qualified. They may want a little bit more an hour, but they get more work done for that same amount of money. So it's really, it's the. I don't know. I don't know the right answer. I'm just trying to let you know things in the past that we've tried to struggle with.
Right, and we've, right, we've.
To how to do this. Whether it's right or wrong, I don't know, but.
A bunch of different models and and, um, kinda found what works the best. Also publishing, we don't typically publish it in a paper. Is that right?
Well, depends on what it, I mean, when it goes out, paving.
Right.
We send something out.
Yeah.
I think the townspeople, if I can just interject, with my opinion that I saw was that we just want to make sure that. Everybody had an opportunity to put bids, that it's not, it's very impartial, that somebody doesn't have a friend and. Or becomes friends with someone and they're the ones who are just getting all the work all the time kind of thing, because there's other contractors in our town and that type of thing, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
We just wanna make sure it was fair.
Yeah, that's a valid point. Um, and and one other thing Dale didn't mention is we don't, we don't as a rule or or go with the lowest bidder either.
Well, it's something to look at, but it's not a rule you have to go the lowest.
Right, exactly. There was no, right.
I mean, we try to be there, but.
Sure, of course.
You're not gonna save a middle, a dollar. No one is gonna cost you 20.
Yeah, right, exactly. No.
No, different you would at home.
It's sort of a, alright. Okay, so we, uh, so we've taken care of that and we'll we'll work on it as far as a. Maybe we can find that other one, Dale.
Yeah.
Alright, next. Let's see. Um, we are at B, Matt Blockler.
Yeah, I'm here just because I talked to Jeff Libby about the money that was awarded through the petition for the air packs. He did not have an answer for me as far as when that's available and when we can basically order those. I have a 60-day lead time. Nothing has to be paid until they get here, but kinda trying to figure out what the timeframe is. So that I can get that stuff on to where. He said that that was something because it's general fund money that isn't his realm.
Well, and and, um, as far as this petition is concerned, um, the money that was voted on is is up to the selectmen to spend. Is the, is how it works. The petition tells us what the town, the temperature of the town, right? But in the end, it's it's up to the selectmen to say. Are we going to spend this money on the air packs? And at this time, and and we can discuss this, but at this time, as far as your air packs are are. Are working and they're current and they're, um, they're. So I would say, um, that 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 money is, um, you know, like a a security blanket, um, that it's there. If all of a sudden you don't have enough air packs, the money is there to order an air pack. And and you guys can weigh in if you, you know, if you want. Um, but, um, it's not necessarily that you get to go out and order for air packs.
That's what the people voted on.
Right. It is what the people voted on, that's correct. Um, but it the, it is up to the selectmen to spend the money and and. And, uh, so that's.
I guess I'm not exactly sure how that works. Um, the. The townspeople voted that through. Is that the same that's gonna happen with the town hall committee? Is that just gonna be, you guys don't hear that either or?
Well, certainly, um, we've, we're going to start working on the proper steps to, but but. The the. The truth of it is, is that, and actually, you know what? Jerry Peters said it perfectly, way better than I can say it, but he verbalized it and that's when I said, you're absolutely 100% correct. If all of you remember that we're at the meeting, at the annual town meeting, when he, this thing keeps squeaking, when he, um, verbalized. That it is in fact up to the selectmen to spend the money, to make the decision to spend the money. And, um, so that. And that he said, hopefully, we'll we'll work and 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 figure out what's going to work best for the town as far as, and that's talking about the building. But but he was correct. And once he said that, I said, yes, I I I agree with you and that's the way it is. Is anybody else wanna weigh in on that?
My opinion and what I would like to see happen is before the petition and what's been happening with the fire department, there was conversations. Between you and Patrick and I think between you and Jeff Sense about getting the department, what's the right head count, what's the right amount of people? How many air packs do we truly need and what's the, what's the right cycle to make this happen? So right now, between the reserve account and this 40 grand, that's $60,000 that's available to spend if we need it. My problem that I have with this, if we spend $40,000 today on air packs that we. I don't feel that we need because you are compliant, they are inspected, they are safe. All we're doing is we're cycling the town into another $40,000 cycle down the road. So I think the, and this again is my opinion, number one, if we hold the money. Work, you work with Jeff, continue like he was, what's the right number, how many we have, how do we? Either A, still try to get grants and or what's a good cycle to say?
I'm the only one in town writing grants. I'm the only one that just got one today.
Then work with Jeff, as I just stated.
But why don't you work with him a little bit and work with the fire department a little bit as the voice of the people saying that. We don't want them to go into a burning building and all of a sudden we find out their air packs don't work. So maybe instead of getting four, let him go ahead and get two.
But that's why we work with the town manager to make these things, right now, all of our air packs are fully in compliance.
Right now, but only for another what, year or two?
No, that's not, that's not true.
We don't know. The bottles for them.
Could last forever, probably.
Available.
Next year, 2216. I just would like to see a little more. I'd like to see a little more given take, I guess.
Well, and it's not even, it's, it's.
Maybe he can buy two and then get the head counts and and then that way we all know that our firemen are safe.
But.
But that's the point.
Yeah, I really do wanna correct you, uh, there and and caution you there. Please, honestly.
But we're getting huge air packs and I understand and that was a wonderful thing, like it was a wonderful thing, but why not start with.
But.
Letting him get one now or two now, because it is the voice of the people saying, we want them to have their air packs. And and at least compromise, I'm just trying to see the board and to have a little give and take back from the board.
Absolutely. Um, we have very concerning budget issues.
Yes, I get that.
And so that money is now safeguarded for the fire department.
But they're not allowed to use it.
Correct.
That, that's, Jeff, you can weigh in.
That's good.
Okay.
Well. I I don't appreciate, I don't appreciate.
I'm just a big first responder. It would be like, he's sending him out, he's on the sheriff's department and saying, well, your vest. Your vest is probably good maybe for another six months or so, so wear that. When we think that we're getting close, that it might not stop a bullet and kill you, then we'll go ahead and we'll get you a new one.
No, that's not how this works. These are, these are annually tested, they're monthly inspected. It's no different. I mean, buy a brand new one tomorrow, it can fail. Doesn't change anything.
So I just look at it as the voice of, I guess I'm going with the temperature of the people that we need to start letting them get, even if it's one. Even if it, like, we've got to start the process of being able to go ahead and and get these so that we can.
And that's what we're saying.
That's my opinion on it. I I think I agree with Deborah on the fact that. The townspeople of Sangerville walked away from that meeting. Feeling like this was going to happen and I'm concerned that if it doesn't. The people are gonna go, what's up? And rightfully so. I mean, they they voted on it. They feel like they left that meeting funding them for this purpose. I would be concerned with that.
So maybe if we could even just do one, let him get started with one, so at least the people know we're moving.
Staff fire department if these guys are gonna feel like they are not supported. They are not going to be here.
Then we want more than that. We want to build up our fire departments.
Well, I, we, we, I mean, we, it's not unlimited. We 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 need a limited, I mean, and Matt.
Absolutely, absolutely. No, I I agree, I agree.
We we can't, um. But the other thing to understand is that with these petitions, these, um. Many times, these petitions have to do with an ordinance passing and things like that. And the voice of the people say, yes, we wanna sell marijuana and, you know, the back when we had that. And that was a people's petition. And that's, that is listening to the voice of the people and saying, okay, the people want to opt out of that. We don't want that in this town. When it comes to people's petition spending the town's money, that's why. It. Even though the town has sent us, we want you to spend it that way, it's our decision to to. Make an informed decision. Um, because if not, I mean, think about it, next year, what petition? You get a group of people that wanna wanna, you know, and I don't wanna sound flippant, but you know, build a, you know, a a community pool. Or whatever, and you get enough people and say, yeah, we wanna do it, we're gonna spend X amount of dollars. So it's it's a little different when the petition has a dollar amount attached to it. And, um, um, so. It's important to to be aware that we're we're considering it and and it, that money, yes, um, that money is there and. And tomorrow, if four packs fail and and Matt needs the money, then absolutely.
Then it takes 60 days to get them.
Right.
So that sets you back even further.
So it'd be nice to have at least one coming to show that that we, the selectmen, are listening to the voice of the people. We understand and it's not a. Community pool, you know, this is people's lives that we have on here, so it's a little different. Um, respectfully, I'm I'm not trying.
Yeah, well, and I.
But I think that it would be a big step to be able to, and I'm not trying to speak for you either, Matt, but to be able to say, okay, you know, because we do have budget issues and stuff. But we do still appreciate the voice of the people, our fire department, let's go ahead and just get one coming in and then we can start to figure out. How many do we really need? How, you know, how many people show up at the fire? How many do we really need? We may not need 11. Maybe we only need four.
I don't think we need any at the moment. Um, we were told at the annual meeting that we don't need them right now.
Do you, do you wait until your car is ready to break down before you start considering? I mean, I I see that you typically.
I do.
Barely new cars.
No.
Most, not everybody typically waits until their car is going to leave them on the side of the road to look into. This is, it's called the end of life for equipment. It's extremely vital. Jeff can attest to it with a fire department. It's not, it's not pencils at school. It's not.
That's correct. Correct.
Books, it's not rooms on paper. It's life saving, etc.
I think another thing.
They, they recommended end of life for those is between 15 and 20 years. They're 21 to 27 years old. So the smart plan is to start, which is just what this petition was. It wasn't, let's buy all brand new ones. It was, let's start because in. Five years down the road. You could have five that either aren't working anymore or certain regulations could change and it's going to force you in to have to buy them all at once. And why would you wanna do that? Not only for the fact that you're going to in 15 years have to buy them all at once again. But also, why wouldn't you try to span that out?
Right.
These 2216 bottles that we have, the pack may be okay, but the 2216 bottles are not going to be available. So when they're expired and no longer. Able to be used anymore, they have a 15-year life and they're, we have a few of them that are coming up in the next year or two. When you can't buy one, the pack can be great, but if you can't put a bottle on it, it's.
I understand that. And that's when you say, okay, time to order those new new air packs.
I'm just asking for a plan. I want you to work with Jeff, get a plan.
What's that?
Can you give me a list of new bottles when they expire?
Yeah, you should have one right now, but.
And just to let you know, I'm saying that what John said, that one's not gonna help it.
No, but it's showing content, it's showing. No, but it's showing intent, it's showing a good, it's a step of intent.
Buy two, you can put two in the front of the truck.
I'm happy with two, but I'm also happy with one. It shows the intent of the board.
I know what you're saying.
That now things have changed a little bit, that we are gonna now be a cohesive town, and we're gonna start working together and caring about each other and making sure that people are safe and taken care of. So I, I just like the intent of, okay, let's get one coming right now. And that way it's showing the intent that, yes, we are going to go ahead and replace these um, as we go down the road. And the money will be there, but let's get one coming to show that we, we are here, we are here for the fire department. Um, you know, boot drive money got taken away from them of six thousand dollars. I just, so one, one air breathing apparatus shouldn't be that big of a deal. And it would show the fire department that we are here for you and we stand behind you.
The only money on equipment that's been spent in this fire station since I've been back here in Sangerville has been fundraiser money. That is it.
And that's illegal.
Right.
Fundraiser money is not supposed to be spent on equipment.
Well, when we don't have vouchers because we don't have.
You know, obviously, that's, I mean, that's something that you need to work with Jeff about, but any donations to the fire department through the town isn't supposed to happen that way.
What is the money supposed to be used for?
It's supposed to come through the town to us, and then we are the ones that have to approve it.
So when I go through boot drive and I donate money, I'm actually donating it to the general fund of Sangerville.
That's correct.
And that's what the sign should say, because I'm very mischievous.
That's exactly right.
Hundred percent correct.
That's why we should have Friends of the Fire Department. Every other town does it, so it doesn't seem like it should. I just look at, if they don't stand on the hot top all day long and spend their time doing it, the money should go back to them, is all I'm saying.
It has nothing to do, it has to do with what is legal and what is not legal. And we can only do what is legal, period. Correct.
And I agree, and I didn't know anything about that. I'm just saying.
Right, so that's why I caution, I, and I, and I caution everyone to make sure you know, you know, to, to just make sure you know what you know, because what we, we know what we know. And unfortunately, many times, we're not out there with the fire staff.
But we have six thousand dollars now that was taken and put in the general fund. So that is legally supposed to be used on equipment. So there's six thousand dollars that we need.
No, no.
I thought you said it had to be used on.
No, no.
No. Was the fire department cautioned in the first place?
No, I mean, this, they've been doing it for years. We caution, we, they, once we knew it was illegal and that it was not Friends of Sangerville, and that they were there in the capacity as our municipal fire department, the money has to go into our general fund.
Correct.
That is the law. And so that is what we did. Um, and so Matt knows that now, and if they wanted to do a boot drive, they could get their own T-shirts and, and do their, get their own bank account and, and do a Friends of.
We are, it's a nonprofit, are they established? It's no different than that wall right there. Chair member of Matt was you, or you was a check. Wanted to donate money to help fund that.
Yep.
And when they come to the board, that's why we talked about this, no, please do not donate money for that project. Because if you donate money, it's gotta go to the general fund. What you can do is, would you like to donate the material so that the wall could get put in? Yes.
So wouldn't you guys put that into the, like, fire department reserve? I mean, it kind of came from them when, when.
Goes to general.
That just makes no sense to me. I guess I'm a little lost. But I do think, I would like to see that step of the board starting to work with the people in the fire department and say, let's, let's get started with this. We know it's gonna be an issue within years from now. We've got to get things started. It would just be nice to see that one step taken and saying, go ahead and order one pack. Then we've really got to sit down and figure out what we need.
On, as, with regard to, I would, I would defer to, um, our town manager, who is, got years and years and years of experience as far as, uh, what, what would be a good solution.
For this problem?
Yes.
She's speaking from a heart.
Absolutely, I, I, and I.
Matt, Matt is speaking for his department, uh, what he thinks he needs. There is that thing out there, NFPA, that everybody's referring to, that, that could pass. I don't know about bottles. I don't know, this is the last year for the two-point-two bottles.
This is the last year for the two-point-two bottles.
Be made in town.
If you cannot get a bottle, just put a lot on that pack. So that pack can be whatever, but if you can't put a bottle on it, it's a paper.
And that's understood. I mean, that, that's a, that's a no start. And then you need a new pack. When that, when we are at that impasse, a hundred percent.
But it's, it's my feelings, if the board is going to approve packs that he, he needs to, because you're gonna have an art model, it's gonna be totally different, everything else, and the training involved in that one pack, everybody else is gonna be a little bit different. The heads-up display is gonna be different, whole thing's gonna be different. And if you got two, then at least you got one truck that's got the same packs in it. You gotta add a part, add, you gotta buy four bottles anyway. If you buy four packs or eight packs, there you go. Now you're into eight thousand dollars in bottles or sixteen thousand dollars in bottles, and in fifteen years, here comes another sixteen right at you. If you do anything, look at working and stagger.
Sure, right.
And that's, that's exactly what I'm saying.
And, and this is a big wag, you know, like even more back, it's fifty-eight thousand dollars, and people don't realize what general government is. General government's mostly fixed costs. So now you gotta try to find out where you're gonna get money for stuff that's fixed, that you really can't change anything.
Right.
But this is what I don't want to see.
Right, it is, it is, I'm just saying.
But I don't want to see what has happened the last year in this town, where it's been nothing but a screaming match. It's been disboarded against us, is how we felt. Um, that's why the town came out in droves and said, absolutely not. Like, I think that's why they came up and they kind of spanked you a little bit and said, fine, we'll, we'll take some of your money away and see how you like. But I mean, I'm just saying, and it's not right.
And it's your money too.
You know, it was really, honestly, I'm sitting here at the town meeting, and I'm listening to this person complain, why do you only have a part-time town manager? You need a full-time this. This person's complaining. And then all of a sudden.
Everybody's irrational, because everybody's pissed.
Well, when the town office is only open two days a week, because that's all we can afford, it's not our fault.
Because those are the numbers.
Learn to communicate with the people. It shouldn't be a fight all the time. It shouldn't be people talking at us, which you don't, Jody, I will, a hundred percent, you do not. We've talked on the phone, you are probably, we can disagree, but we can still communicate. But the rest of the town is not like this. People are up in arms. They're pissed, they've had enough. And now they're just coming out and doing what they want. And you can sit and snicker if you want. That's what pisses people off. You can't sit in these meetings. Some people management, some people management, like, start to really just listen and talk to people and understand what they're saying. And I understand, you have a much bigger job. Now you've been cut, you've got to try to figure these things out. Um, but I think that just making a, making me feel, anyway, I won't speak for that or anybody, that, yes, the money's there, but we've got this budget problem, so we're just, it's not even on the radar. We're not even talking about it right now.
So that's, but when you talk about communication, that is not what I just said. Right from the very beginning, when it was my opinion of what I think we should do. I told you that I feel that Matt and Jeff need to work through this.
A hundred percent.
Come up with a plan, and then come back to us to what we could do. That's how we need to work back and forth.
Absolutely, I agree with that, a hundred percent.
And that's what I'm trying to say.
Jeff and I had agreed in the budget meeting that we should start with two and see where we can go from there. And that was shot down. That's the only reason the petition even went through, because if we had had an agreement with them, there would never be a petition.
Well, if, and, and, well, maybe I wouldn't even go there, never mind. Um, okay. Um, well, you asked for four, and it was agreed you needed two, so.
No, it was agreed that we needed a plan to start replacing them. Four was a decision on my behalf on what I thought would be a good spacing, because you, like Jeff said, you get one, you're wasting your time. If you get them all at one time, then guess what? You're paying, you're buying them all at one time in fifteen years. Again, that's why you take four, and then in a couple, two, three years, you do another four. Or you start doing two a year for, and, and hope that you get them replaced before you're forced to replace the rest of them. But nobody wanted to work on that kind of a plan. It was just a, we'll put ten thousand in and we can look at one. Well, one was going to make more of a headache than it was worth. So I had to be a spokesperson for the department, the people that are going to not be thrilled, and do what I'm asked to do, which is to support them. And I don't know what else to say. If, if you guys can't meet them in the middle a little bit, I don't know if we're gonna have to worry about it, because half of them are probably gonna find somewhere else to fight fire.
I think another thing to consider too, which the price of everything is going on a day, let alone specialized, but.
It just went up April first, it's gonna go up again next year.
You, this is, this is more packs than half. Is it gonna be four or three next year? Or it'll be two next year? That petition was written to buy four packs for forty grand. And if you save the forty grand and wait five years and you're only buying two packs, how does that work?
No, that's a valid point.
It's an investment for at least fifteen years, but they're not meant to last twenty-five. Where, yes, they're still passing a test right now, but that doesn't mean that they're always going to. That doesn't mean that they should be, you know, it's just like your nineteen ninety-two Toyota Corolla. Okay, passed inspection this year, but maybe just by a hope and a prayer. It doesn't mean that you should still be heading to California with it. It means you got lucky.
Go see Jeff, he'll get that bad girl running. He'll make it.
Matt, how many people, how many people are certified to wear packs?
Ten.
Ten. Okay, I thought it was seven. Okay, okay.
But how many people, and I'm not trying to play devil's advocate here, how many people that are certified normally show up at a fire?
So I can almost always at a fire, I can count on five that can wear a pack. That's why I was like, okay, four is a good place to start, because the majority of everybody who's there is at least gonna be using the new packs. The other ones, they're still there, they're still gonna be used, because Jeff knows sometimes the smoke shifts the wrong way and the pump operator has to throw a pack on, because he can't breathe where he's standing.
Or it comes winter time and your, that regulator freezes up and you're gonna throw the whole pack down.
If you don't have time to, to say, you gotta sit there and throw in the truck and thaw it out. You're gonna throw in the truck and grab the next one.
Hey Matt, can we get together sometime this week, the first time next week? Let's go through the inventory of bottles, how old they are, when they need to be replaced, the inventory of packs, how many you've got, the age, what.
This will be the third time, the third time.
I haven't, I haven't done it.
Third time's a charm.
Let me get that all together with you, and then we show it to the board and try to give them a picture of you.
I just, I, I don't know what to say to these guys. They're not, they're not gonna be. They, they were ready for support.
It was nice to have that tantalizing support for once.
The town showed up and they showed their support for them, and they're really bright-eyed and ready for the future. And this is gonna, this is.
Well, I, I know my own opinion, Matt. I'm not saying no. And I'm not saying this needs to take weeks or whatever to do this. But, you know, like that night you keep referring to, your plan when you came in then was twelve packs. And even on your petition, it said, this is, this is the first phase of three. And now you're coming here tonight and you're saying five. So that's why, that's why I'm saying I need you to work with him. What is the right size of the department and what's the right number of packs? Because if we need five, and like, if what Jeff's saying, two is the number, not one at a time, okay, that's pretty doable. You buy a top, you could stagger this out in two this year, two next year, and then you're fit.
Jeff knows, and to speak to your, that night talk, that night, I just came with three options for the board and the budget committee. I came with an option to purchase all new, I came with an option to lease all new, and I came with an option of over a year, over a phase of three, three phases.
Yep.
What we have for a department right now is what we need. We need twenty people. We need the ten people to wear a pack. And just because I might only have five there one day, that doesn't mean that five can cover it. Because if humor all burns, then I got ten. And I need them, and I need them available, and they've all gotta be working. Um, so Jeff, I think he's got, he's got twenty years in it, I've got seventeen years in it. We both know the size requirements of this department, and we're there. But we need to, we need to push something forward for a plan. I wasn't, I'm not saying four because we absolutely need four. I'm saying four was a number that would help space things out. You know, would two a year for a while work and help us? Of course it would. Will we get to a point, probably, where we're gonna get maybe six of them and then have to buy the rest outright, more than likely, because we're gonna run out of all those for the two-twos? Or regulations gonna change, or something's gonna fail? That's why the plan was stated the way that it was. Because if we don't act now on a plan with either four over the three years or get them all on a lease or whatever, they're not going to all get replaced before something forces us. Those two-point-two bottles are only one more year. You cannot buy them after that. They're, they're obsolete, they're discontinued. Everything's going to forty-five hundreds. So whether or not we have packs without a bottle to put on it, it's, it's obsolete as well. That's why I had brought the options, that's why.
No, and I appreciate how hard you're working for the, for, for our town. I do, I honestly do. And I know how passionate you are, Matt. Um, and we, we as well are working passionately for this town. So it, it, it's not us against you, it's, let's, let's figure it out.
I get that. My thing, Jody, is what I'm trying to reiterate is whether, so that forty grand is sitting no matter what. So if it's gonna sit in that account until we need it, why can't it be used to buy some equipment that isn't going to, we're not gonna lose anything by buying the equipment. Alls we're going to do is benefit by, one, being safer, two, having a whole lot better morale with the department. And they're going to see that, okay, they're trying, as opposed to it just sitting in that account anyway. What, you know, I'm, I'm just not seeing where it's gonna hurt.
If it's sitting there this year, it'll be sitting there next year. So what's the difference if we spend it or if it's.
Well, obviously, you know.
I get it. It's got to do with the budget and all that.
It's just that if you can get a plan and then we stick to the plan, rather than it's forty thousand now, forty thousand next year, then you're committing yourself fifteen to forty, forty, forty again. It would be nice to just lay down a nice plan, and if it means four packs this year, if that's the plan we have to do, that's what we have to do. But for me to just throw forty thousand at it, and I don't think any of us truly know what is the actual number we need, and what's our plan for next year or the year after, how do you keep it moving? I don't think that's the right way to do it.
I think plans are great.
That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying no, I'm just saying not today. And please, hurry up, let's get a plan, and then we can, whatever that truly means.
One more time, Matt, third time's a charm. Third time's a charm, Matt, come on.
Just so if you're asking, how does that work if we wait too long and then we can't afford four packs of that forty grand?
A, a quick question, it's like, um, is it ten thousand dollars per pack plus bottle, including masks?
That's including, so that forty thousand is four air packs, eight bottles, because you need a bottle and a spare for each pack, right? Plus the masks that go with them, the masks.
So it's the complete turn off?
Yes, of course, that we have, they obviously, as they do with everything, the old masks don't work.
Yeah, yeah, yep, 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 they're not.
So that forty thousand is all of it.
Got it.
And it.
So ten per, per you at this point?
Ten thousand per, basically, one full setup. So the pack itself is like sixty, seven hundred. Each bottle is over, well, very about a thousand, just over a thousand. And then the mask is like four hundred. It ends up being right there, just handy to that ten thousand.
Okay.
I verified with them again to make sure that the forty thousand covers everything. He said, yeah, you're still okay right now. But when they bump again, Scott changes the pricing. They have the ability to. It's, you need it, we need it.
Usually twice a year.
Is that right?
It will be two pumps a year.
Is that right?
So it's going to continue to go up. It's never going back down again.
So how does that work? I guess back to the original question, if it goes over that forty?
I guess back to the original question, if it goes over that forty thousand and we can't afford four of those out eventually? Because there was petition for four packs for forty grand, but now you can't get, say, down the road, you can't get the four packs for forty grand. They cost more, how does that work?
Well, I mean...
Do you mean in this, in this year?
I mean, the petition was written to buy four packs for forty grand, so you've allotted forty grand to buy four bags. You're saying we're not gonna buy now, but down the road, we want, we finally do need to buy them. And now they're over forty grand, we can't, we don't have enough money in that allotment to buy the four, what was agreed upon in the petition. So how does that work?
Well, I think, I think you're getting, I think you're getting down the road too far, but, but...
Am I though? I mean, how?
I think you are. Because I don't really think that this process should take very long.
I'm just, I'm just trying to...
I mean, I don't wanna see this stretch out six months to...
I don't need to, trust me, I'm just curious.
That price increase.
Well, and again, if, if, if in fact you needed all new, new bottle, new, new complete units and those were completely one hundred percent, we couldn't use them tomorrow, we as a board would have to sit here and figure out how we're gonna get, get new air packs. And how many we need. But, you know, that, that amount is forty thousand and so it would be the amount that you could buy. But I, I do think, you know, let's, let's...
My thing is, let me, if Jeff, say Jeff and I agree on getting two a year or something along that line, you know, why can't we throw the support that way and then let me continue to write my grants every year? And if we get a grant for, for rest, great. If we don't, then we keep working towards it. Like I said, a hundred hours of grant writing. I got my third grant of the year today. I mean, I'm like, somebody said, Tommy, I'm the only one doing this. And I'm happy to do it, but...
Honestly, man, I would like to get you some help. I don't want you being the only one.
I don't, I don't...
I would like to have, and nothing against you or in any way, but I would like to reach out to something for a resource that maybe knows a loophole or knows something about writing one that would give us more opportunity.
I already, I use a grant writer. For all the big grants, I use a grant writer. She has agreed to do it at no cost for Sanibel because of our financial situation. She was the one that secured hundreds of thousands of dollars for Greenville this year. It's just there are different parameters for different towns, different populations, different financial situations and we didn't qualify. We, I'll continue to keep doing it and I have no problem doing it. I just, we can't, in my eyes, just let it go and hope, and hope, and hope that maybe someday we'll get the grant for that.
What, can you share with us the grant that you were awarded today?
This grant today was the Ed McDonald Safety Grant. So it goes towards safety-related items. So traffic vests, LED flares, stop and slow paddles, cones, stuff like that.
How much is it for?
It's up to two thousand fifty for that stuff.
That's fantastic, that is fantastic.
Every grant is targeted to something.
Yeah.
You know, safety grants targeted to safety-related stuff. You have safer grants that are targeted to payroll stuff. You have forestry grants that are targeted to forestry equipment. You have communication grants.
Sure.
They all are targeted to one particular thing except for the huge FEMA grants, which we've, we've applied to, but we haven't gotten anywhere yet. There's talks that that money is going away. The federal government is probably going to pull it. And so those big things that pay for possible fire trucks or three hundred thousand dollars worth of gear is probably disappearing. So the thought of hopefully maybe getting one of those is getting slimmer and slimmer. I keep trying and I always will. That's why I use the grant writer for that stuff because FEMA does have criteria. And there is part of your narrative, the way that it's written is, so that's why I use her. She's, that's what she does. She does grants, literally, that's it.
Well, um...
Jeff, you would make this a priority, working with him?
Absolutely. It's going as fast as possible. Last time they'd come in, I'd been right on and got the stuff for them. I told my dad that this weekend, this week. Do the same thing with Matt. Definitely follow through on the stuff I said, Rob.
I just wanna make something happen as soon as possible, one way or the other, because the next time I meet with these guys, I wanna have an answer other than, sorry, you're not getting a boost up. Because that's, it's, no, I'm gonna go home.
Well, and just one last word with regard to grants. You know, this board has been trying to, has been asking to be able to write for grants to get an incredible amount of money for this town. And, and the town has said no, so, you know...
Well, there's a whole lot more to that than just applying for a grant or a gear. There's, there's more to that. I understand what you're saying.
We're, we're trying. Um, we, you know, it's all about money, it's all about the pipeline, the dollars, right? And that's what we've, we've been trying to, to do that. But I won't say anymore about that. I, um, so, okay, I think we're gonna table that then for tonight. And we'll move on, does that... Yes?
So FEMA inspection was, you're talking about manager's report now?
No, 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 our new business, Matt Bockler. See, we're gonna sign the documents to appoint Jeff Libby as town manager, road commissioner, and local health officer. So...
Is this a full-time position?
Is this what?
Is this a full-time position appointment?
No.
So this is part-time?
Yes. So, um, uh, I vote that we're going to, or I will, um, yeah.
So does this, Jody, just make him go from intern to part-time? Is that what the...
It's appointing him as a town manager, correct, yes. So I'll make a motion to appoint Jeff Libby as our town manager and as our local health officer and our road commissioner.
So your hours will be the same, Jeff? Your hours will be the same?
We'll have them, sorry. Any discussion? Vote? Three, and we'll sign this paperwork. So now...
One more's quick.
Oh, no.
Holy cow, Jeff. I thought mine was bad.
Yours is, yours is...
Did you get a doctor to analyze anything?
Okay, so we're moving on to the next, item eight, town manager's report.
FEMA was here today to look at the cemetery slide. Four different individuals with them, preservation group. They all looked into the slide, they took some GPS readings. They're gonna help us out a little bit with it. We have to contact an engineering firm. Actually, they wants to contact two engineering firms and get two quotes of what that would cost to fix it or a plan. Talked with Darryl, I don't wanna call Darryl first because he's a hydrologic engineer. He'll take care of that. I wanna see what the cost is gonna be because anytime you get engineers up here, there's gonna be money involved.
Oh, yeah.
And there was another lady here that deals with grave sites and things like that. Their concern is even though there's a road there right now that we got blocked off, that don't mean there's no bodies there.
Oh.
So she was cautioning, if we have to slope the road down, we may find something there. And what would be our plans, where would they go? So bottom line, they, they took a bunch of information, they'll get back with us. They told me it was really no hurry on having to get all these reports done, but to start looking into it.
Have you been talking to, um, our sexton as far as...
I have not yet.
Okay. I mean, obviously he's aware of the slide. Or maybe he's not.
Yes, he's the one that brought it to me.
Okay, okay.
But I do know, years ago, in that older back section...
Correct.
What we thought was empty lots were not empty.
We, we went down there today and then...
So nothing would surprise me with what she's saying as far as the road and what may or maybe where.
That slope is about like this, this paper, this hill.
I saw it when it was coming across the bridge.
So you got all the trees there, but that slope being like that with all the trees growing up on it and it's all gravel.
Grave sites or graves there now that are crucial this going?
Where the big slide is, the big slide is probably either the wall or the first grade. Now where Dale's talking about down near the main road, you're only talking a table, but it looked like there was an old road there one time, dead holes. And so one of those girls was here about preservation of grave sites and stuff.
It's not against it.
But it's not really sliding that bad down there, but they took GPS readings and...
As of yet.
Because that, that's like...
Well, again, as, as Jeff said, it's, it's gravel, so there is...
There's no binder to it, yeah.
No. And where it did slide, you go get your river, the river kinda hooks right there. So that current's gonna get, work and gets that bank hold up. Because we have wet, wet up, and then it all, it flows out. And we got all that water from the flood and...
Well, and now that it's, now that it is rolling, you know, that portion, it just now...
And most of the trees are gone.
Yep.
Because the river took them down. So like one or two left there, so all that went down.
Well, what had been happening over the last five or six years is the bigger trees were getting big enough that they were starting to tip. So we did, some of the bigger ones, we cut out just to try to help hold the stumps in, to help that.
Yeah, we cut that, we topped them so that the, the root system would stay there.
Right.
And hold it, hoping that it wouldn't slide, but it did.
So is there another engineer that might specialize more in?
You got Darryl and you got Plymouth. They're both well, both deal with roads, both deal with Darryl.
Correct.
Those are two, those are two game players, really, for that one.
Was that, I didn't know what that type, that was...
Yeah, like a special...
Yeah, I mean, because you're dealing with a lot of water in this one rather than a normal...
Ricky's, Ricky's been up here because they're drilling well, water just drilled well. Ricky's been up here, but I, I got some stuff going on in Gilford, I couldn't break away, go over there and see Ricky. I'll give him a call.
Okay.
Would the, would the National Guard come up and do anything?
Um, you're thinking Army Corps of, Army Corps of Engineers.
Would they come?
Well, I mean, obviously that would be ideal, um, but...
But I'm kinda hoping with the FEMA putting the door...
Yeah, exactly.
We got a government agency in there, we get the engineers in there.
And then they bring out the army.
They give them the help pull.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Easier than a recall.
That would be great.
Do you guys have any thoughts on who's gonna do the work once you figure it all out?
No.
It's gonna be, somebody's got some...
It's gonna be huge, yeah. And it'll be just like any other engineer, really, they're gonna, it's just fall into an engineer's plan, they're gonna solicit...
Know all about it, cause we're ready for everything.
Yeah, but they're the ones that's gonna do that, not us.
Yeah, but there's more than two engineering firms local in Maine.
Yeah, it only...
Are you reaching out to other people or are we just stuck on these two?
No, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Jeff.
Those are the two I've used most often, that's been used around here most often, is Darryl or Plymouth. And I look and see what, I'm looking to keep money down.
No, I got you. That's why I'm asking if you've reached out to other, you know, engineering firms that are in Maine that could possibly keep that cost down for a time.
Do you throw out some names or what are you thinking?
They're like VHB?
I've heard that name before.
Yeah, they're the...
What is it?
I'm working with them right now in Old Town, so, you know, they're, they're good engineers.
Was it VHB?
VHB.
My personal association's really gonna be, how much the cost if you come up, you know?
No, I got you. I got you. That's one thing, I mean, it's worth going all right?
Yeah.
Now, do you work for an engineering firm?
No.
You...
No, I'm a consultant. I get hired by the state. I'm a, I'm a construction inspector.
Ah, oh, okay.
So that's all I got on FEMA. Matt, you do the flags sometime?
Doing it this weekend.
You've got enough?
I believe so.
I don't have any stairs though.
I believe so.
Okay, let me know, the flags. Does that all, already clearly get the plan, that's done. That's all I have.
For town manager's report?
Yep.
Okay, just wanna back up for one minute here to, I've got an application here that these come through occasionally from the Timber Hitch for a, when they have a party or a wedding or whatever, an event, that sort. We have to sign and they work for their alcohol license. It's a one-off every time because it depends on who's serving the alcohol that we're, that we're certifying. So I make a motion that we, I don't see any, I don't see where we sign this.
Second page.
So, I'll make a motion, let's see when this is, that we are granting the Timber Hitch their liquor licensing and alcohol beverages operation for the date of the event is June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, from three to eleven P.M. So I grant them permission, go ahead.
What's your motion?
That's my motion, to grant them permission. Oh, okay, got it. Does anyone want to say?
I would second that.
Okay. Let me just quickly. Okay, all right. Sorry, Jeff, we'll go back to road commissioner's report?
Um, working on the beavers. We've got some beaver problems, Scott has been out there three times now.
Best of you.
So now we got the state tracker out there that's gonna try to remove the beavers. We had to sign a contract with them for pool money. You remember what the nine dollar number was?
Seventeen hundred.
Seventeen...
Whoa.
To remove the beavers?
Oh, it's crazy.
It's like five cents for something.
For what?
So actually, no, no, wait a minute now because it is legal now for the landowner.
Oh, landowner.
So I did notice the other night going camp, they're already on the... Yep, I did. So we ought to get with Chris because Chris owns Audie Anderson. I think Chris would be in favor.
Yes.
But I, I know it's through Inland Fisheries, but I don't, we've never had a landowner that would agree with this? So I don't know if you've dealt with it yet and what that process is?
It's been about a few and a half years.
This one is.
This one.
Ours is, Audie Anderson.
So we contacted a couple people, myself and Scott Reynolds, but we didn't get a lot of callbacks. The one guy that did call was from Lilo. He wanted a hundred dollars a beaver. Hundred dollars a beaver and fifty cents a mile coming from Lilo, Gilford, back to Lilo checking on the traps.
Isn't there a guy, Abbot, that does it too now? Is it Bates?
Is it something legal that like we have to trap them and we will feed them?
Well, no.
No, the only way you can, as far as the municipality, we're not allowed to, but that's where you're getting into...
A landowner can...
A landowner, because you're flooding, a landowner, I, they changed the law, I'm not, I'm gonna screw this up. But the landowner can contact Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. They, and somehow, I don't know the details, a permit can be issued.
Cause they're nuisance.
And the landowner can dispose of it. But as far as the town...
Consider it probably taken care of, right, exactly.
But in the meantime, have we signed this contract?
We, he's out there doing it now, but it's not seventeen hundred dollars just for these beavers. So this contract could go for a whole year, so if we got beavers someplace else, we, we work off that, off that money till it's, till it's gone.
So where's the one, the problem one that you have now that you talked about?
Like Lemels.
Burrows Road.
Burrows Road, down past the cemetery.
Too, doesn't it?
So think about, think about it this way. You've got a thirty-inch culvert and every time you have Scott, well, where you have a contract to go on, that culvert's gonna get beat up. And sooner or later, that culvert's gonna move in, move in, move in. And I just purchased one culvert and it was almost five grand in, in that diameter. So we don't do something about it and we keep running...
But I'm just, what I'm wondering about though, you know, like Mike said, the what we're talking about on the Anderson, because Anderson gets flooded all the time and it's the same issue.
Look at the culvert, all the dirt falling through the rocks, it's getting smaller.
Mike's land actually gets flooded out because of all this, so this land... Mike's land actually gets flooded out because of all this, so this landowner may be willing to help us through the inland, to help take care of that problem.
Yep.
So, but what I'm wondering is, could we dive in a little bit over on these other spots and see if there's a cooperative landowner? And we may be able to do the same thing.
That's being impacted, that makes sense.
We had, uh. I did it through the mill, um, it's through USDA, which I didn't understand, didn't realize they do this. But USDA has a division of nuisance animals and a team that comes out, so they were trapping pigeons. On the roof of the mill, we did that for two years actually, crazy how many they get out of there.
Yeah.
Um, but they also, they do all nuisance animals, whether.
That's what this is true.
That's who this guy threw?
That's what it was true.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, but he could, he approached us with a concept of where you take the, your culvert. And then they install a secondary culvert.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then actually goes out and then they like pig fence around it.
Beaver Deceiver.
Yeah, the Beaver Deceiver is what he actually called it.
Yeah.
Um, so they hear the noise over there and they try to plug around it.
Something over here because they hear the the flowing water.
I don't like it.
You don't like them, you're not a fan?
I watched. Just moving your problem up there.
Exactly, that's what they do.
The one on fifteen had it and it actually worked for a couple of years.
Then it got all flooded.
And then it's all, yep, it's gone now, they actually ripped it out.
I like the nuisance permit and I'll talk to Chris about it and I think we can take care of them there very easily, well, I know you can.
But I, those other ones, if we could find similar landowners.
Yep, this is the only place right now that we have any beavers, all those.
It's not, it's the ones you don't, it's the one that's bothering that.
Not there yet.
Correct, cause it's no different, if you go down past, on Silver's Mills, last year, which never had a problem before. But down on Silver's Mills down by uh, the other grade on the other end before, Wilson's Field, there's that bog and. One culvert right there, that plugged up and was going over the road, so.
We were sitting at our house one day, we have a two acre farm pond in our backyard, we were sitting, it was like seven, seven thirty at night. And I look up, I said, what is that? And there was a beaver walking through my driveway thinking that he was gonna go down and get in my pond, out of nowhere, it's like weird. Like we came off Route twenty three, you get an Uber or something.
Her little pond at Jazz's house, same thing, she had a beaver in that last year.
Yeah.
Some time a year that the.
Well, it wasn't his time.
They're kicking, yeah, they're kicking the adolescents out.
I wish that he went the wrong way that night then.
So we'll ask Chris about the ones down there and see if he would would do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so um, so that was a road commissioner's issue?
Still going.
Okay, carry on, carry on.
So after Scott Reynolds come on, we cleaned all the park up, more of the park, there was trees down, they dumped big piles of dirt, we leveled that all out. Um, we cleaned up all around with the guys, got them all, pulled all that in, um, and also down there, the flag pole was broke. So, they approached me about the flag pole, so we bought a piece of pipe to fix the flag pole and Jason came back and.
Um, Martin Taylor, um, his brother has actually bought a flag pole, a lighted flag, flag pole to put down there.
Wow.
So we got a piece of pipe that we can just work.
All right.
Well.
Okay.
So that's been taken care of, so.
Good, as a matter of fact, I drove past the park just, was it last night or something, and I thought, whoa, that looks great, I mean, the road's graded, it look, it looks fantastic.
So we got that done, and the last thing was when we did the cold patch and we forgot the off Dexter Road, that had some big stuff in it. And uh, so Santos had come and put in, made a request of uh, doing something with the road this spring. And I thought we got it and we missed it, so uh, Boston went out, first pile of wheat, batched in some great good coal, so that one should be better for that.
Great.
That's all I have.
Good, good. Okay, um, now, so, um, well, we can hit on uh Sleckman's concerns, but then are we back, going back up? Okay, so item ten, any Sleckman's concerns? Jeff?
I guess not at this point.
Okay, um, I think, I think I'm good, so. Now we are going up to um. The town meeting, uh, old business, item six, town meeting. Um, so, uh, I think the most important thing that we need to deal with tonight is the the reduction in our budget.
Correct.
And I think, I think, should we just plan on that for tonight?
I think that's really, that's the big thing.
Okay, do we have copies of it? Or no?
I do not, I think you have your own workup, right?
I have mine.
Okay.
Thank you.
I bring my little.
Can I, thank you.
Well, I ended up, cause Jeff wanted to know, I did the savings on payroll and so forth. So I put a bunch of shit together for the.
Savings on what did you?
Have you looked at this?
Payroll.
Check there?
From.
I was broke, I was like, will you look at it then?
Cause the change of.
As we're going to throw it, because I have mental understanding of how it works.
Okay, okay.
We're gonna say, you know, because you know your numbers?
So this is where we're, this is what he's been paid, this is what Patrick's been paid. So you saved about five thousand dollars switching.
Okay, okay.
And this is projected out through the end of the year.
It goes all the way.
And this is what we have, so we have the budget amount.
Okay.
Subtract Patrick's pay, Jeff paid it eight.
Got it.
Jeff paid to the end of the year and the balance is left.
Okay, okay.
Did that both for Sam and I also, and what we did with this is I did it at her regular rate.
Mm-hmm.
And add her raise, add a raise rate.
Okay.
Okay, we give her regular rate, this would be the raise rate.
Okay.
And if you follow it down through, it also, this is what um would be to the end of the year.
Okay.
Um, this is mine.
That's full time town manager.
To the end of the year, and then these are the two, um, this would be Sam.
Okay.
This would be me.
Okay, so these we've budgeted, and that's that that's the same eighty, those, that, yeah, yeah, okay.
These are big question marks because.
So this would be if we did get the raise, and if we did not get the raise, would be over by the, or over by that.
All this stuff is fixed.
Oh, wow, so we were even under.
Bank charges, registry deeds.
Stay at the rate we were.
You could see when we were twenty eight hundred, we didn't move that, advertise.
Yeah, I thought I, I thought I had plugged it in.
Well, I still fifty with that, yes.
We budgeted that and we spent um two hours over that.
He's done a lot of the budget off his, his sheet.
This was the computers.
Um, as far as the. We were cutting.
Okay.
Um, like computers.
Yeah, I'll listen to him.
This year, the computers finally died, the other ones are like fifteen years old, everything's backed up with a pen drive, there's no solid state or anything in them. We were gonna do this this year, because next year, we gotta do the trio system.
Oh.
Next year's no. Eight thousand dollars, because it's no longer.
Next year's, yeah, it's gonna be expensive.
So you canceled it, this right here was uh, town office, maybe it's like, we're never gonna spend that. Anyway, that was if you get, oh, this is a thousand everything, so.
And that's how you said that, if we.
Health insurance, you have no, you can't, you can't change that. General liability crime, that's fixed, general liability's fixed, that's fixed, workers' comp, you you know how that works, public office. That is for Michelle and myself to, if we make a mistake on your books and we're bonded, you pay the FICA. We're gonna look into FICA, there may be some savings there on FICA.
Yeah, how would how would that be?
Should we? The wages are reduced.
Oh, 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 I see, that's projected, I got you.
Because that's projected.
Okay, yeah, but still, that's, yeah.
It's not gonna do anything.
Income protection and insurance.
Are you, you, are you following along that, okay?
I already, I mean, I, I, there's already so many fixed buckets.
Take a look at this and that's, that's salary.
This is all stuck, there's nothing hooked up for that, so there's no, no, no money for that. This is the Old Town Hall contract, all that stuff's all, so, I don't know, that number's there. Michelle, what, division thirty, you look under uh, Old Municipal Hall, there's a twenty six hundred and seventeen dollar.
That was wet worth.
Oh, okay.
That was one with that we had to pay.
That goes somewhere else now, okay, so that'll disappear, engineering contracting, that's ten, uh, that's gonna go away. Um, legal fees, we're still checking on that, so we don't know all the calls that have been made and things with legal.
When was the last time we were billed by legal?
IRA, that's uh, if they choose to.
We had one just recently.
Oh, okay.
But it was run through my window, I don't think that we already, that we have.
Pretty, pretty flirty.
Pretty flirty.
So the difference is that.
I don't think I've gotten a bill from them, but I can, I can totally email you.
Comes and just talk.
He's got me doing, checking that tomorrow.
So about twelve thousand, I don't know, you're gonna find twelve thousand, I don't know. You wanna take that and I can get plenty more copies.
That's an interesting dilemma.
What's that?
It's an interesting dilemma. Yeah, it's a, I mean.
Distressing dilemma.
Well, I can, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, well, and.
These, when we do these budgets, because everybody thinks there's all kinds of fluff, there is no fluff.
No.
So, what we present was real to the best of, and how we explained it, I mean. Was the town managers over some in case we need him to be full time, yes, it was to do that, or. It was a real number because we need to buy computers, it was a real number because you gotta do maintenance. So those type of things, I guess, sure, if, all right, we're not gonna, can't do this, cause it's not budgeted, no computers, no maintenance, none of this. But, when you got all these line items that are a hundred percent fixed cost, you know, you can't say, you know, I'm gonna pay, I don't want, you're not gonna pay.
Right, right.
Well, we've also heard from residents that wanna do the online registration.
Okay.
Well, rapid renewal is kind of through the state, so you're gonna lose some money there, cause you're gonna lose your, lose your municipal fee. But our computers won't.
Do it, you can't do it.
I can't do it.
And the other thing, and honestly, it's been a complaint of ours forever, the way their computers are set up. Is like no office in the world. I mean, they should have a hub and the computers should all feedback, it should all go up and.
Yeah.
You should have security and, and that's not how it works.
No.
This old relic over here, you have to leave on and this one works back for this.
We do have a server, but that's the one that's the hub that's gonna be expensive to fix.
If, if the building burned, you better grab the server, forget about the people, leave the people and get, grab the server.
The other thing is, so when Sam gets backed up, she has the only computer in the office that can do debit cards, debit cards. So if you're doing a checking cash, I can take you, but if you're doing debit and credit cards, I can't touch you.
Oh.
So she can have a line deep of four people, they're all doing debit cards and I can't help, there's nothing I can do. Unless it's fishing name, which doesn't have to go through Trio. I can jump in there and use the Moses system and be able to pull the registration off and a receipt, and then we can log it in later. As long as it's not a credit card, or debit card, if it's check or cash, we can log it in after the.
But with the credit debit, you're still, you're dead in the war.
I mean, we have computers in our office, but at the end of the day, you're functioning not a lot above a bad paper.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, what you can do with this one, you can't do over here, this can't.
And I can't do registrations off my computer either, because I can't find a title, I can't access the title.
Won't access that over.
Right, right, right.
So. That's what the budget was for last year, so just to show that we did our job and did as much as we possibly could. That was gonna be the budget for this year, so it was actually, we actually cut the budget from last year, so.
Yeah, exactly, so we got.
Cause what we're concerned with anyway, I mean, groceries, everything's up, and uh.
So, there is one number that obviously, because you're going to stay at uh, part time, you are not going to be a full time town manager. You will always be a part time manager, uh, for now.
But the way, the way, quickly, Jody, the way Jeff has this here.
Yes.
He's going down through every item that's not fixed cost.
Right.
If you take out the computers, you take out that maintenance thing, you use those numbers off salary.
Did you, are those on there?
He's done all of it.
Oh, 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 I thought you had some money in the bag right here.
Fixed.
Yeah.
And exactly to what we're spending on Michelle or or Jeff.
Right.
We're still twelve thousand dollars short. To get through the year. And that's it, and honestly, I mean. Postage is there, everybody wants more mailers, well, I guess we probably didn't be planning on doing any of them, because.
I mean, we could cut that, but then, you only have one more certified mailing this year. And that's about eight hundred, nine hundred dollars when I do the certified mailings. And that's gonna be October for the foreclosure, for the foreclosures.
And they have to be certified.
And they have to be certified, yeah.
Yep. So that is a hard number as well, I mean, that's.
No, but I mean, it's, what, but it, to sit here today, she's probably a hundred percent true, that's probably known history of. Where we usually are as far as how many foreclosures, that's the number.
Yeah, yeah.
But the reality is, is when we hit for that timeline for what the tax bills are gonna be. It could be fifteen hundred, it could be five hundred, we don't, until we get there, we're not gonna know that. It's more, really, it's the, it's the gamble, you cut everything out as you best you can, knowing you're gonna have a shortfall of ten, twelve thousand dollars.
And that does not allow, that does not allow for our employees to have.
A raise?
A raise. You, you.
At any time?
No, and you didn't even do cola?
No.
Well, that's what we're talking is.
I mean, don't you have to do cola by law, or no? Oh, you don't?
You don't have to.
Oh. I did not know that. Um, I mean, that doesn't make me happy.
I wouldn't make the employees suffer.
No, I agree, I agree, I mean, I think.
Did you do the math?
I did the, the, the math, yeah, that's what those sheets are.
That's what those are.
I projected out to the end of the year with Sam and I not having a raise and Sam and I going with the raise that we talked about earlier. And what the difference was gonna be. But I didn't wanna be, like, assuming, that's why I wanted to.
Right, no.
Especially when we have such a huge cut, we have to make it fit our budget, so I wasn't gonna assume. So that's why I wanted to bring it to the board, what do we, what do we do?
What I would say, my, my opinion would be to go ahead with those, all of those, and and know that we're still twelve thousand, that we're. We still have to find twelve thousand dollars, and then if we do a special, which we know we're gonna have to do a special, we know. Um, I would say that we try to, to. Uh. Ask for the twelve thousand. To, to, I mean, to get through the rest of the budget.
Agree, because I don't wanna use it. Worst case scenario, we have the fifteen thousand dollar contingency and that's what it's there for.
Yep.
It's for this purpose.
That's right.
I would really. Cause even, I mean, there's still things in there, I mean. There's a, I mean, a lot of numbers we're hoping for, and we're probably being close as far as supplies and this and that.
Right.
So I mean, if we really run it like a tight ship. Can we get twelve thousand down to six, just over, you know what I mean, without?
What, what do we, as far as roads, I mean, that's not doing anything on roads, right?
No, that's a different package, so this is just.
Oh, this is just general, okay. And that's what they cut?
But the other thing to think about. We do have a mistake in the article, because, and I will take partial blame, I guess, I was under the assumption that rec field was in that number. It is not.
Under what one?
I thought rec field.
Oh, yeah, that was, yes.
Was part of that number.
Yeah, no.
So we already know.
I didn't even catch it either.
But I would really like to do, honestly, going forward, because everything we're really doing. Everything we're doing right now as far as the rec field is road means, or it's mowing along, there's no more. You know, we don't buy basketballs, we don't buy baseballs, we don't do any of that stuff.
Right.
So, really, for me, that rec, instead of being a separate line item, it really ought to be a line item under Public Works, because. That's what everything you're talking about is.
So that's why I put that something roads, because it is a road.
Correct.
I didn't put, think of anything but feet.
No, and we don't.
Where's the mowing, where's the mowing though, the mowing for the?
Mowing's contractual.
Oh, oh.
Well, that's the other thing too, that's kind of a, in the past, I don't know why we do it this way, but. You know, it's in the budget that put it on a line item, because we mow this piece along, and this is what this one costs and.
Yeah, 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 we used to.
The little piece by the town garage is a cost, and the cemetery's a cost, and, you know, the ball field's a cost, and out by twenty-three, the little flower thing's a cost, and.
That's how the, how the contract comes in, all of us, that's, yeah.
To me, what it ought to be is, this is the con, it ought to be, when you're putting it out for bid, this is what we want to mow, and this is, this is the cost, it ought to be.
Right, right.
Because you're not gonna mow the ball field and not mow.
Right, right, it has to be a complete contract.
Yeah, it's, it's the contract, it's one thing.
Right, right.
You know, you can split it out on twenty line items, but at the end of the day, it's all one.
Right. So, um, so, we, the ball field isn't in, in demo.
I don't know where we're gonna put the mowing.
Mowings.
The mowing's the problem.
Oh, and that's like five?
Still a lot of money, you know, it's money.
It needs to be brought up as special.
Mm-hmm.
As an oversight.
Mm-hmm.
But I think, like I said, going forward, that's how I would.
Yeah, that would clean it up.
That, you know, when we look at, same idea, if you look at Public Works, you've got all these lines. In Public Works, we have a rec field section, and if you wanna split it out to mowing or however, but it ought to be under that number, instead of a separate number.
Yep.
Because we're never not gonna mow that field or whatever.
No, no.
Separating its feet doesn't make sense anymore.
Right.
For how, what things are done.
Okay, so, um, but, with that said, that then does not accommodate any.
No, it makes your twelve thousand dollars worse, because now you're seventeen. Honestly, that's the, you know, that's what I was trying to say was, and, you know, like I said, I kinda said it earlier, I wasn't being smug about it, you know, some, a lot of the townspeople, why do we only have a part-time town manager? Then they reduce the doubt, the budget, so sitting there, it's like, well, they don't want less, less things, but, you know, so, an easy way to fix the budget is you make that go to reduce the hours.
Of our employees.
Correct.
Yet, yet they're working absolutely.
Correct.
To the, especially the last couple of weeks.
That's the problem is. I'll just retire, you three can.
No. Retire.
There you go, you said something there.
Nope.
We can't afford your golden parachute. No, 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 we need you, Jeff, so, um.
I, I think you cut everything you can cut, and we have a special, and we talk about it again.
Okay.
I don't know what else to do.
Yep.
I think we wanna cut services out of the town office.
No.
Because that's the only thing is.
Not when we were trying to increase them.
No, but I mean, thoughts, Jeff?
Certainly a dilemma.
Every election has repercussions.
That's right, that's right, and every, um, you know, vendetta and, and, you know, gotcha, is.
Every election has repercussions, whatever the repercussions are.
So, it's, and I don't wanna dive into this tonight, because this is too important, what we're talking about. But, back to the building, really quick, and this is a you, because you've talked to them. We already know, we gotta pick a contract engineer, but what is the timeline from when we call an engineer to get a full bid package back with quotes? Are we talking two months? Three months?
No, I don't think so, I mean.
Thirty days?
It would be my wishes, you'd go right back to confidence, because they already got the prints, they've already been in the building numerous times, and have them come and give you that what you need.
But I mean, I'm just, and the reason why I'm asking, to help ease everybody's mind of what we're trying to do here, I'm just trying to understand, do we think we're gonna have a special town meeting in two months from now, three months from now? Because I think you're gonna find that engineering report is gonna drive the special town meeting.
If you wanna do the engineering report, we can do it.
Well, that's a different conversation, but I just, you know what I mean? I'm just trying to think.
Yeah, that, that.
Because we can't keep kicking this can down, bro.
You gotta get that done, right, right. Right.
So, if, I mean, if we're all in agreement that, and again, that was my idea, I'm, everybody speak. If we're gonna maintain status quo, office hours, office staff's hours don't get cut, we cut everything we can cut that's non-fixed, as far as what we're spending on, or what we're buying, or whatever, so we can't get it any tighter, and knowing that we're gonna have to have a special in a couple of months, in two months, we're gonna have a better idea where we are, and you're gonna know what that number would be.
True.
That's what I'm trying to.
True.
I mean, we could try that, if we get there, and you have a special, and it fails again, okay, that's been, we're only two days a week, or whatever it takes, but you'd have to do that then to, to get to what, to that number's gonna be.
Yep. Um, so, what you're saying is kind of that, engineering, that package is what's gonna drive when that special is.
I think it's, yeah, I fully.
Yeah, no, I think you're right, so maybe we can get a, um, now, the thought that occurred to me that, and I agree with you, that Carpenter was there from day one, so they have all the historical knowledge, and they can pick up where they left off. Um, the only thing is, we did have complaints at the town meeting that I heard, that, you know, you know, which, which engineers are you gonna use, are you gonna get bids? You know, do we put this big job, it's going to be a very big engineering job, out to bid? They bid on doing the job.
I have a bad idea, not a bad idea. I mean, I honestly, you can say all these names, and sure, I've heard of these.
Right, right.
I don't know any of them.
Yeah, no, no.
I agree with the theory of what he's saying, if Carpenter did this twenty years ago,
Mm-hmm.
and they've been involved recently, the reality is, is they should be able to step in and.
Hit up.
Do what we want.
Right.
For a lot less money than anybody else.
Um, you know what that number is, for them to step through the door and just do without assessment.
Right, but I wanna, no, I, I really would like to know, I think what I, my opinion is, and what we heard from that town meeting is, everybody wants to know what it's gonna cost to fix that building. And the only way you're ever gonna know what it's gonna cost to fix that building, in my opinion, is to have your engineer, your engineer not only do his report, but he takes it right to bid, and he comes back to us, this is my bid, this is my report, and these are the bids that I have to complete all of this work, and this is the sign-off cost. So, your A to Z, start to finish, this is how much it costs. And I think if you don't have that to go back to town meeting.
Yeah, you're, you don't have a solid number.
You don't have a solid number, because if you can, and again, I tried to say it at the meeting, I wasn't, I was trying to be respectful. Dennis and everybody on that committee did a phenomenal job, and everybody tried to get a number they could. But, that's not the same number as an engineer's gonna come up with, because it's his name's gonna sign off on that work. So, you know, how, whoever he picks or chooses, it has to be at that caliber for him to do that. And, that may not be the same number that if one of us was gonna do something that you solicit out.
How long ago was it the carpenter came in?
Well, they were in, oh, they were in the building.
Oh, Carpenter was here two months ago?
Yeah, they came in then, but I mean, we had them in three, four years ago.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So, I mean, they, they have a history of.
That's right, that's right.
But I don't know what that truly means.
I got the whole history, all the people they talked to, all the things they did.
Yeah, that's, that's good. So, ju- just to share this, um, and, and I know, you know, it's getting late, and, but, so, just so, you know, I do know that a lot of people listen to the tapes, just to outline what we're talking about, i- if, if you'll allow me. So, if MMA denied the insurance on the building, okay, they will likely not ever reinstate their insurance until it has been signed off by a structural engineer, okay? So, next point, if the town or the group of citizens in support of saving the building wishes to actually use the building, there's a sequence, and the sequence is this, okay? First, the town should solicit bids from engineering, and this is what I'm, engineering firms, to bring the building, the in, building into safety codes and repair all structural damage, as well as upgrade the ADA, American Disabilities Act. Um, once an engineering firm is selected, the engineer designs the project and puts it out to bid, so that's what we're talking about. Um, once a builder is chosen, the engineering firm will oversee the repairs, as, as it is their engineering stamp, and their reputation at risk if the building falls in. Once the work is completed, the engineering firm will issue an occupancy permit, or will file the appropriate paperwork with the town and the state. Then, and only then, will MNA have an appetite to ensure that building. So, that's, I just wanted everyone to understand, that's what we're talking about right now. We need to start at the very beginning and either, so, do we get, you know, because I, I, I heard a lot of people saying, oh, you're gonna use this firm, you're gonna use that firm, no, we're, we're just trying to do a job. So, um, do we get bids from the engineering firms? I mean, I know it's gonna prolong it longer, um, but the.
You say that, but at the end of the day, how are we really gonna, I mean.
Just getting them, yeah, right.
What are you talking, five, eight engineering firms in the area, top to bottom, that you can call?
Well, and again, it, you know, maybe we'll get three who wanna bid on it, you know, and I'm, yeah, yeah, right.
If you pick up the phone and you called, and, and I don't even, I mean, Heath wrote a name, you knew a couple, um, if you called some of these.
Right, yeah.
And had them, number one, hey, this is what we need, we need a full, we need a bid for you to come in and do a full project plan.
Right, structural, you know, the whole thing. Now, unfortunately, when they come in, they open up walls and everything else, because.
Well, but at the start of the point, though, all we're asking for is the dollar amount.
Of, of the, of the project, yeah.
Correct, so.
To bid on doing this work, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I kinda feel bad, it wasn't on the genetics, I know people wanna be a part of this, but at the end of the day, all we're talking about right now is just an engineering firm. There's no, no decisions, no, no, nothing going on.
No, no.
But I think in light of the budget, we really ought to move forward on this faster, at least go to this level, if that's the direction all three of us think we should be doing.
Right, because we wanna continue to march toward a special town meeting.
Well, we're gonna have to, because we have a budget shortfall.
I know. Yep, right, so, um.
Jeff, you're too quiet. Taking it all in, well. So, I understand we have to have a engineering plan for the entire project, I get that? And what we're talking about is bidding that engineering process out, so that when we go to the town with the, the people on it, you just picked the highest-priced engineer you could find to.
Yeah, that, that, that's, in that.
That is, that is what I'm interpreting, that's what you're saying.
That, but also, I just, I, I, and maybe I was just reading it, there was a group in the back that just kept on saying, yeah, you're gonna choose who you wanna choose, maybe, and maybe I didn't interpret, I just interpreted that there was some sort of a family situation, like, oh, I'm gonna pick them because, you know, my, whatever, but, uh, now I understand, they were saying, we're gonna pick the highest. I didn't even, I mean, that wouldn't even cross my mind, to pick the highest, because I wanna save that building. And I want you to know that, I wanna save it, and I want it to be restored from top to bottom. Um, so, we're gonna do it right.
I agree with you, I just don't know how I wanna spend town funds.
No, I agree, no, 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 I don't wanna spend any town funds, none.
It doesn't matter what direction we go into, it doesn't matter if we spend town funds, or if we try to have something for a nonprofit take that building over, you're not gonna go in either direction if somebody doesn't know what they're up against.
That's right, that's exactly right.
And.
That is right.
You need to have this full plan done, so that, you know, it, it's great for, my opinion, to be no town funds to do this.
Right.
It's the townspeople that's gonna make that decision, it's not us.
Right.
And they can't make that decision until we get them there.
That's right, that's right.
I think the only way, and, a- again, I heard this back and forth in the back about who you're hiring, um, I've been going with the same thought process as you. If you continue to use the same one, you gotta be saving money somewhere here.
Yeah, they've, they've done so much.
But I am very open.
Right.
If we reach out to five, six, whoever, and just ask, number one, this is the project, are you interested in giving us a price for what it would cost to come in, do a full evaluation, and we want all the way to an end project bid package, what would that number be? And then that could come back to us, we could put it on the, as an agenda item, once we have that information, because I'm sure members of that committee would wanna be here to listen.
Yep.
To whatever that report or whatever they're gonna say is gonna be, and then we could move that forward that way, but.
Yep.
I just think we gotta move it faster than.
Yep, we gotta.
I mean, I know the group wants us to move faster, but I mean, we have a budget shortfall, so, I think that's gonna be the slower part of getting this part fixed, so. We just gotta use the two together and get us there.
Yep, I think that's a good game plan.
Does that sound?
Sounds reasonable.
Does it make sense?
Hmm.
Okay. So, I, I have no idea with all, so, I mean, you know a couple.
Yeah, I talked to carpenters, I know what that number is, there it goes, it's too big for them to do. And they passed on, it's not many people do that type of work.
So, what I, I, it would be nice if you could do this via email, so even the proposal of what you want under this case, could we send the email? So then you get a response back that says that, there it goes, not interested. And same way.
Keeping us in the loop.
Well, and keeping the whole public in the loop, we've got, so that way there, everybody knows, knowing what you've done, but who's either interested and uninterested.
And, and, yeah, and Jeff, when you say you already know that number, the thing is, is it straight through to bid packages, to, to?
Oh, yeah.
Yes?
All the way through to the work is finished.
Okay, got it.
To see the project.
Yep, okay, yep, there you go, because that's what we're gonna do.
Right, because that's the engineering cost, so we still, we need to have them do that.
That would be the blueprints, they, they, they've already signed up to bid, that's all we really get, know the number.
Absolutely, that's the thing, that's, that's it, you know, it's easy for someone to come and say, you know, all about this, but they don't know, when they open a wall, that, you know, that it's all rotten, or, or whatever.
Whatever.
Whatever it is, so, that's the honest way to do it. Um, uh, so, okay, so, does that work for you with regard to emailing, keeping us? Now, did you get, did you get my email to include Jeff on the, with his email information?
I have, I was gonna ask him tonight, have you decided on a different email?
We're going to do a different email, I don't think she's got through it.
Okay.
But we can, we can do it with the one I have.
Now, okay, because I've got the paperwork to file for MMA, but I'm not gonna do that until tomorrow morning.
Okay.
But I knew he was considering a different email, so.
It, yeah.
I don't wanna send that in, but yes, I did get his email.
We had that conversation.
Okay, good, 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 um, but keeping us all C.C. in, right?
So, are you going to actually?
I don't care if he keeps us C.C. in, he can go ahead and do his thing, and he just brings it back to us with the number.
Okay, okay, that's probably better, that's better, yeah, that's.
That way there.
So, you're not gonna put an ad out in the paper to?
I wouldn't, I would just reach out to.
Just reach out to the.
I mean, you're not talking.
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't think you need to put an ad, because it's not as though we don't know what the, who's out there as far as engineering firms, I mean.
I'll, I'll find out who's, does that type of work.
Correct.
I mean, he might know some people already, you know, let's see what I got.
Does Brian's group, do they have engineers, is that something even for a local number?
Uh, maybe, I don't, I honestly don't know.
I mean, parity, would that be anything in their wheelhouse either, or no? Parity, do they have engineers on site?
Probably not that type of industry.
No, and that's why, I'm just asking, because I don't know, that's, I mean, some of these bigger players, as far as doing things, a lot of them are starting to have their own project management team and engineers and things, so. But.
That sounds, that's, sounds like the plan.
It'd just be di- nice to have a different layer of, or, you know, however you wanna word it.
Right, okay, so, um, okay, so I think that's some good, uh, motion forward on the building as well. Yes? Do we need to, um, codify that? The changes?
No, I mean, you can, you can run down through it, but I think it's pretty clear, I mean, if it's in that budget, and this is a hundred percent necessary, and we have to have it, we're not buying it, you're not spending it?
And it's a unknown, it's in there, we don't need normal, yeah.
Correct, that's the other side of it, we don't have everything back from the audit yet, you don't have, you know, there's a lot of numbers that we're so unsure of.
That number could be more, well, I anticipate it being more than.
Oh, boy.
You can get the assessors back, yeah?
Yeah. Um, when, when, what's the timeframe or with the assessors, do we know?
The assessors or the auditors?
Auditors, auditors.
Okay, so, um, I knew that he's gonna be working with Ron, the owner, up in the northern Maine this week. So, I have some questions for them, I was gonna email Ashley, who's the supervisor of our auditing group, um, and ask her where we stand, but I also have a couple other questions.
Okay.
Um, as far as like, the four forty, if we bring that out of the bank and into the books, you know, help me set that up so that I have it the right way to be set up.
Right, and the forty, forty, right.
It's gonna be presented in our, in our books correctly.
Right, right, right.
So, um, and just double-check and see, when are we gonna have a draft, I would expect a draft by the beginning of next week.
Okay.
That's what I'm expecting, what they do is another thing. He did say that the general fund needs to have some work, because there were many different, um, general entries that were not done. So, our books don't reflect what's really there.
Okay.
You said the general ledger. Maybe the general ledger had some problems.
So, and Jeff and I have both talked, and talked with the auditors last Wednesday. They're gonna come in, because of the checking account, they're gonna come in, and they're gonna get me caught up to date, so that I know everything is good, and I start fresh.
Okay.
And move forward, so.
I think what would be good is just, we moved money and didn't, didn't put it into where it was supposed to be.
Yeah.
Didn't show that trail. And so, they'll help us correct it, and where that number needs to go, the right number, or, so.
And get it fixed.
Good, okay. And, um, did they do, and, budget-wise, they're, they're, they, are they budgeted in, their number?
They are budgeted in.
They are.
We cushioned it a little bit, yes, because
We know who's in there.
Having them, yeah, having them have to come
Yeah.
um, and do the checking account, which is what we asked them to do. Um, but they were there all day, two, three, and all the way today.
I know, now, and, and, and we're gonna stay with them at this point.
At this point, I think that's the, you know, the best idea.
Yeah, that makes sense.
They were very good with me as far as whatever questions I answered or asked, they gave me good answers, and they dumbed it down, so they weren't talking like up here. So, so, yeah, so I was comfortable with them.
Okay, all right. Any other items that we should discuss tonight? Next meeting is not May eighth. When, um, it says on here, May eighth, so-
Yeah, that's, so, your next board meeting would be June fifth. You're gonna have three weeks between this meeting and the next one.
Uh, we'll be meeting before that, don't you think? Okay, so, um-
Don't we have something to, and, I mean, when is Josh coming in with all of his stuff, and all that, setting mill rates, and-
Well, and that was another question I was gonna ask you, you guys set what they have and go over the budget versus the mill rate? Do you plug those figures in?
He usually comes in, and, yeah, well, he comes in, plugs everything in a trio, and then usually what happens is we play with the, me and you would play in trio between what he's put in there to the overlay, and then give us scenarios of how much of an overlay, plus or minus, and what that's gonna do to the, for the mill rate.
Okay.
So, and you're, you, you've used that worksheet?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, 'cause there are certain things that you're like, I don't know, I haven't done it in, you've done, so-
We just, we do a lot, yeah.
That meeting, we'd wanna meet down there, so that she can-
Yes, 'cause it's a matter of plugging.
Back forth, back forth, we keep, we keep-
You don't wanna put any more in that overlay than we have to, but we have to play with that number to try to get the mill rate as best we can, and
Yeah.
It's not always as easy as saying, oh, I'm only gonna do ten, well, maybe not.
No, and then it fluctuates, and then, so you plug it in, and then you give us the numbers, and, and what the mill rate will be, so we'll plan on have, so, so when we can, whenever we can do that-
I can call Josh and see when he's gonna have all that information dumped into our system. Because, we don't wanna commit too early, because if you're gonna have a special town meeting, you, you might wanna have those figures in before we fix the mill rate.
Right, right.
Yeah.
'Cause that could be a fly in the ointment there.
Yep.
Could be.
So, right now, we've told, people have asked, where's my tax bill, or like-
No, 'cause honestly, I'm kind of envisioning if you're gonna do a specials, I mean, you're gonna pull a hundred percent out of reserve, if you're gonna be passed when we would do commitment. You know what I mean, so, whatever we would, whatever we would do, if we have to, as far as general government, you're gonna have to ask for that out of general fund. You're not gonna be able to have that go towards taxation, 'cause your tax bills are already in the roll.
'Cause when are the taxes-
So, you're not gonna have a choice to do it that way.
I usually use July first.
Okay, yeah.
Just because to keep chileans and all that stuff in order. I mean, but we can, we can mess with that, it all depends on what the board would like to do.
Is that the date we have always stuck to, when those tax bills come out, July?
I want them out soon as we can.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because you only allow two percent in, a discount the month of July, so if you're in the middle of the month, that's not gonna work for you residents.
Everything to do with that tax bill's gonna roll on time, if you have to do anything with a special, it's gotta be, gotta be on top of it.
Yeah.
As far as I'm concerned.
Oh, God. Okay.
Okay, so, we're not having a meeting here.
So, really, I think you gotta come back to us, and-
Right, right, talk to Josh.
And then the same thing with on Jeff's side, I mean, if, if, uh, if that would work quicker, sooner than later, and he's actually got some real numbers coming back, so we can talk about that, there's no sense for that to wait for the rest of the year.
No, and, and the meeting with Matt as well.
Yeah.
Um, the only, yeah, I mean, I'm gonna be gone the tenth through the sixteenth at, at the-
Okay, well, there's a lot of this.
Yeah, unfortunately, and if you have to meet without me, you meet without me.
Yeah, we have to, and we could always just at least have you phone in.
Yep, I could do that.
And your opinion is-
I could do that.
And you can't vote over the phone, but you-
Still, that's only, that's only one week in between.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause I'm leaving Friday and coming back Thursday.
Even your next Wednesday meeting would be the twenty second.
Okay, so-
If you, if, from this one, a week later, and then the twenty second would be, when she's back.
Okay, so, should we shoot for the twenty second, we'll put the twenty second, we may end up meeting prior to that. 'Cause I'm back, back to sixteenth, so if we need to meet-
We, we, yep.
You know, if, um-
And this is gonna be at, at the office, or playing here for the-
Well, if, if we're-
'Cause I know what we, what we do.
When I find out, okay.
We may have to have a progressive meeting, because there's no way we can do that overlay stuff sitting here. 'Cause we, we've always had, Brad, he would run back and forth through the office to-
Well, we, you can, but the problem is, you couldn't. I mean, you could have Michelle sit there and wait for-
Oh, do all the different permutations.
And plug in like eight different scenarios, I mean, but that is-
Yeah, exactly.
Pick one.
Yeah, we could do that, but-
So, and I do have the spreadsheet, it's actually a working spreadsheet on my computer that Josh sent, Josh sent me, so I can plug the figures right in, and you'll see the mill rate.
It, remind me, Dale, is, is the overlay the only number that we, that we tweak?
Yeah.
Okay, that's-
The state gives you a high and a low, you can go as low as this, as high as this, but no more.
Okay.
I'm really more concerned with Josh's presentation and what's gonna happen with our evaluation. That's my concern.
Could be interesting, and you might find, in strange scenarios, you might find that all your values go up, and the mill rate drops. That has happened, it depends, just depends.
I mean, well, what we did with that straight across the board increase
Yep.
in valuation, in theory, everybody's mill rate should go down, which, I mean, we haven't spent any more money, but at the end of the day, we know the county and the school's going up. So, that's gonna play a part of that, but the other piece is, is what I'm worried about is with what we did as a straight across increase, is that still gonna hold us in line with the state?
Yeah.
Or are we, I'm really worried that we're still gonna be teetering on the bottom,
Mm-hmm.
even with this increase, and we may have to do this again. Which will be huge if we have to do that two in a row.
Yeah.
But, I mean, he was telling us, he's got some towns that have been doing it. He knows of towns that have done it every year for five in a row, um, to catch up.
Yeah, 'cause they, they're rates so low, their values are so low.
Yep, and-
So you have to tier them up, yes, so you have like one big shot.
Look at what's around for properties and what they're selling for.
Yeah.
You know, and then you go back and you look at some of our tax evaluations, and-
Hmm, does not add up.
I've seen some and were, you know, thirty percent of what they sold for.
Right, and that's just, that's the crazy part of it, is all the sales are just beyond anything our normal main person working in this area can afford. Yeah, and so that makes it, so nobody else can buy anything.
Yep. But we can't keep falling out of line, so we can't hit home, set down, you know, it's like-
Yeah, and then you start getting into-
We start losing everything.
Like, the state will give you refunds, they will do this and that.
If you get below, what, seventy-five percent?
Yeah.
I think then we've-
Then, then it comes from a screech and a halt.
Yeah. And we were right there, yay.
Well, we didn't get full, we didn't get full home set.
Yep.
Right, 'cause I think you were like eighty, seventy-nine, eighty percent?
It's gonna, I'm really, like you said,
I know.
I'm concerned if what we did is enough.
Well, I mean, you know, nothing, I can shoot Josh an email, give me some idea of where we're looking.
Yeah, I mean-
'Cause the sheet he sent me has a radius on it.
It seemed to be close, I would think.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, Sam goes over, they'll call, Sam goes over to the top tower by Jeff, and all of a sudden, the mouse is going, and they're doing whatever over the door, all they have, they do, they do that, so.
They're magical computer systems.
Yeah.
Correct.
All right.
So, I'll make a call to him tomorrow morning, find out what we can do, where we're staying, and yeah, and report back to me.
Very good. Is that it, are we in good shape for tonight?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay, and just, just to confirm, because I know there was a lot of conversation, go ahead with the employee increase at this time.
Is that what? That does not reflect that. That does, right, correct, that does not reflect that. So, so, let's look at that number, so, this is twelve, that we're still-
I, I would recommend, at this time, we do not do it, because if we do it, the audit comes in higher, you're gonna be well over twelve. And if we can't get it approved, what's gonna end up happening is we're gonna have to make a cut.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, do you, this is what I'm thinking, I mean, it's COLA.
Right, I want them to hear, sorry. I, it's, mm-mm.
It's not good.
No, I know, it's not.
I mean, every full-time employee, and they expect a color raise.
Right. Okay, Dale, sorry, I stopped Dale, because you guys were talking, I wanted everyone to hear.
I'm just concerned that if we do the raise today, and we can't get this approved as a special, the next thing, the reality is gonna be, we have to cut hours. So, what little bit you add for the raise that I know we're supposed to do and we should do, and then if we're forced to cut hours out, it's a bigger loss, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
That's my fear.
No, totally, totally understand, I mean, really, that's, that's why I wanted to make sure that we were all on board and work, you know, working together, because that is such a huge cut that was done in town meeting.
Right, and that is the, I mean, honestly, that is the condition of COLA, is approval of town meeting.
Ah.
That's the other side of that, that you think about.
Okay.
I mean-
I, I didn't, I-
I mean, we, it's in a, you can't remember the exact verbiage, you go in on personnel policy, blah, 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 but it's always contingent about approval of town meeting. I just really hate the thought that, you know, by doing that, it's hitting them, that's all.
That, sorry, by doing that-
And what we're trying to do, it's really affecting-
Our employees.
Correct.
Yep, exactly. All right, well, I think, I think, I, I really value your, you know, I mean, you do this all day long, Dale, so-
Well, no, I mean, it's you guys' opinion, that's, that's my opinion as well, but, that's how I'm looking at it, is, you know, do you move it forward, and then you take a gamble that you're gonna cut their hours out anyway?
Right.
Or you keep the line as tight as you can hold it? And then hopefully, on every single line item, and then you know, we can try to get to where we know what firm numbers are.
Yep.
Because right now, we don't know what all these firm numbers are.
Right, I mean, it's still a work in progress, you know? Jeff and I have been over it, tried to cut when we could, you know, you looked at it tonight, there's not a lot of it going on.
Right, well, and as Dale started this whole conversation, you know, there's no fluff built into that, that budget, not in the scent.
So.
All right, well, so we'll just, we'll keep it till the answer is no.
Okay.
That does not include the raises at this point, and, um, but we'll, we'll hope that we can go to the special and-
Yeah, yeah, I mean, cut out what you can cut, if there's anything left, go to the special, if we can't get the funds, and the next thing is, is reduce staff, reduce hours.
Eat up the contingency.
Yep. Then you just flame the fire that you, the problem with, and this is my problem, I agree with what you're saying, Jeff, my problem is going into a budget cycle already knowing you've earned a contingency, because you don't know what's gonna happen in six months, you know? I mean, even the fire department, you guys got a budget, something happens to one of them trucks, and you need to spend five thousand dollars tomorrow, you're gonna spend five thousand dollars tomorrow, but that five thousand dollars has gotta come out of our contingency. I mean, that's the other where, you know what I mean, that's not just, it gets used everywhere, I mean,
Right.
The only time, honestly, the only time that we've used contingencies was with the fire department. So, that's where, going into it knowing you're chewing it, that's where it's dangerous, in my mind.
Yep.
'Cause fifteen thousand dollars isn't a whole lot of money. Twelve thousand turns into fifty really quick.
Very quick.
And then there's nothing left for contingency.